I want to thank the public, both for its attendance here today, which is robust, to say the least, and also for your patience regarding this process, which has been for many long and arduous and is not finished yet. I also want to thank the committee, who has worked long and hard, frequently at night, longer than the 8:30 stop time, and they have consistently come up with additional ideas, for which we're all very grateful. And of course, everyone on the committee is receiving the usual major compensation for the work that they're doing. Tonight, we have, in many ways, a single objective, which is to solicit useful feedback from you, our citizens. It's one you'll see on the list of our factors that we feel are the priority factors that we should use when we're trying to sort out the various alternative. Public feedback is a major item for us. And tonight, I want to emphasize to you, we are not going to take any votes. We are not going to come to any recommendation conclusions, because we don't have all the information yet, as you will find out, number one. And, number two, we don't want to come close to taking a vote when we're still receiving input from you all. I will say also that, because, for a variety of reasons, the numbers of supporters for any single alternative are really not of interest to us tonight, and I appreciate all the green shirts, although some of us on the committee are bitter that we haven't received one as a gift.[136.76][136.76](laughter) But that's okay. We'll get over it. So here's what we plan to do tonight. We want to review our work so far, so that everyone here is familiar with it and basically on the same page when we begin to ask for their input. And I wanted everybody to know that for the K through eight recommendations, we're still awaiting a major consultant report on the feasibility of expanding our existing schools. And that report is expected, as best I can tell, in early August. Let me just speak for a moment on what we view as useful community input at this point. Believe me, we've read all your emails. We understand the arguments pro and con presented regarding particularly Old Lincoln School and the Green Amory Park, but consistently without consideration of other alternatives. There's no need to repeat those arguments tonight. We are very familiar with them. We appreciate them. But tonight, we'd like to focus on having everyone understand what all of the alternatives are, so that they can begin to consider whether their favorite alternative makes sense for the entire Brookline community, or whether some other alternative might make more sense. Sorry.[233.87][233.87](laughter) That might be those noisy people below, right? Okay, so what we need is for you to examine and compare and understand the alternatives. And that's one reason why we're going to go through them tonight. So here's our plan. We're going to present options for both the K through eight and then our high school needs. And when we do that, we're going to identify the advantages and the challenges. I hope somebody's manning the control center.
I will explain what is happening. We're trying to set up -- please, in the room, be quiet. We're trying to set up for people who could not get in here tonight. And I would like to say that we knew there would be a large turnout. We've done our best to try to provide for everyone. There is a satellite location in the school committee room on the fifth floor. And I think what you're hearing is an attempt to ensure that they can hear us. Eventually, we should be able to hear them, and I hope this will stop.[308.83][308.83](laughter)
I'll march on to the best of my ability. Okay, so with both of those, the K through eight and our high school needs, we'll try and identify the advantages and challenges for each of you.[324.12][324.12](laughter) Folks on the fifth floor, please cut their mics. Folks on the fifth floor, if you could shut your mic down, it's causing some ruckus up here. Thank you. Anyway, so after we've done that, we're going to provide you with some financial estimates for both operating and capital needs, and share with you the factors that we deem to be most important when we're considering each option compared to the others, over and above the financial considerations, which are clearly important. And by the way, just to let you know, during our discussions here so far, we have eliminated a number of possibilities. Some of them that we've eliminated, for example, are the Lynch Center site, which originally we thought was perfect; the eighth, ninth grade school, which we thought was a great idea initially; the Massachusetts Association for the Blind property, because they're not interested in a trade; and a single grade school. And there may have been others too, which I didn't mention, but I thought I should just mention a few. Then after we finish this review, which I hope won't take more than maybe 30 minutes, we're going to ask you to respond to the questions that you picked up on the way in. And Chairman DeWitt will talk more about that. We're asking you to compare the alternatives by studying the advantages and challenges listed, using our factors or others, if you feel that there are others that are more important. I'm going to ask you to assume that student health, safety, and the protection of reasonable green space are all givens. Those are not arguments -- there are arguments that have been made appropriately and strongly, and we agree with them, but we don't need to talk about them anymore. Under the assumptions that we will make, which alternatives do you feel are better for the town? Which is better for the town as a whole, and why? We will carefully read responses after we get them consistent with what I've just said, and I repeat, useful community feedback is an important factor for us. You're also going to be encouraged to submit questions or comments to which the committee right now can respond tonight. And Chairman DeWitt will talk more about that as well. One example for that might be if you have some additional information that you would feel would be useful that we haven't presented. Then there'll be time for public comment. We don't know how much time there will be, because we don't know what the extent of what we're going to do, how long that will take. We would prefer that only one person speak per subject. And we'll ask you to state your subject upfront, and we'll ask you to keep your comments to three minutes maximum. And I'll just repeat, we're not interested in the number of supporters for one alternative. It's not something we're looking for. Maybe you have an idea for a different class configuration of a school or another site we should consider. Those we would be very interested in. So I thought for a moment I would just tell you what I think is going to happen after this meeting. As I said, we'll await the consultant's report on the expansion of each school in early August. Then we'll -- we, the committee here, will make one or more recommendations to the school committee, because that's our charge. That's what we're supposed to do. And the school committee should be able to make a decision on the best plans to follow in the early fall. And here's probably the most important point for all that I want to say tonight, and that is, once we have a plan, then the entire community must come together and support it. And we'll have to help you do that, because if that doesn't happen, we won't have a successful override, in which case, our students will suffer. So while we appreciate very much the debate that goes on now, I ask you to think about the future, when we will need everybody pulling together if we're going to be successful. Thank you. Chairman DeWitt.
Thank you, Alan. I'm just going to explain briefly, and then we'll do it later in more detail, how we hope to be able to give people a chance to participate. Clearly, there will not be opportunity for everyone here to speak, and I'm reluctant to ask you to raise your hands, but I'm making a bet that this room is not filled with parents of students from Baker School, or Driscoll School, or other school communities that haven't already gone on record with us. And we're really trying very hard to hear from the whole community. So part of what we will do is give people colored cards. We're going to ask you to write down questions, which we will try, as a group, to answer within a reasonable amount of time. Fact questions that we can answer that may come up during the presentation. Then we will allow comment -- we will invite -- I don't mean allow, but I really do mean invite comment, but we will allow limited comments. In other words, if 90 percent of the people in this room came here to speak about Amory Park, 90 percent of the people in this room will not be given an opportunity to speak. We'll have to have some representatives from different perspectives and different parts of the town. So we will try to ask you to group yourselves, and that's what Alan said, by topic, and we will try to give a representative sample of individuals to comment around various topics. We also have a group sitting downstairs in the fifth floor in the school committee room, who are in effect disenfranchised, because they couldn't fit into this space. And we're going to try to find a way to bring them into the discussion, although with the technical questions, I don't know whether we actually can hear from them, but we're going to see if we can. So I just want you to understand that what is really important to us is that when we pass out cards, even though you may not be allowed to speak or be heard, if you write down your comments, we will collect them and we will pay attention to them. We've had more than 200 emails from people about the B-Space deliberations, and we have tried diligently to respond to the best of our ability. I don't know if we've responded to everybody, but I can promise you that every email we got was read. And if you write down comments, we will put them together and collate them ultimately, and they'll be put together on the website. It'll take us a little while, but we'll certainly take care of that. So I just want people to understand that we're trying to give people an opportunity to be heard, but not everyone will have a chance to stand at the microphone and speak. And having said that, maybe we should just start our presentation, right? Okay. I'm going to start with a little bit of an overview. Take a look at the screens above or the screen on the side wall. This is what's been happening with enrollment. And if you look, in 1995, there were about 425 kindergarteners. And you can see that there have been a few bumps, but there were very consistent numbers up until about 2006, when all of a sudden, we got 550. And from then, it has been a steady climb. We have longitudinal information about birth rates, and historically, the town has had about 80 percent of the statistical birth rate match with enrollment, and now we're at 100 percent and climbing. So, next slide. 600-plus kids enrolling in kindergarten each year. This shows you the classroom needs and distribution that we've analyzed. And if you look in the yellow column, that's how many classrooms there are in this school year, just ended. If you look at the blue-green, the first, I guess it's kind of lilac column, it's how many classrooms have been added since fiscal '08. That's 37. And we know that between now and fiscal '17, we need to add 30 more, which would total 67 classrooms just in K through eight. We need another, I think it's 32 for the high school as well. So there's a lot of demand, and this is just a sort of overview. Next slide. We've looked at some options. We have asked for a consultant to review sites that would include expansion on existing schools. That would be everyone except Runcle and Devotion, and that's because Devotion is already in process of going ahead with a renovation, and Runcle has been done. So the other six K through eights will all be examined for possibilities. We've looked at the possibility of a K through eight at the site of the Old Lincoln School, at a location in northeast part of town, and at the site of the Baldwin School. Next. And we expect to hear from the consultants in August, which is to say, we don't know yet. So be aware that we're not jumping to conclusions. There are some reasons why we think expanding on individual K through eights have some appeal. There would not need to be new construction. It actually means we don't have to do a lot of redistricting, which a new school would require. We're hoping to preserve neighborhood schools. It has a much more favorable operating cost compared to adding another K through eight. And we're not sure yet whether we would be eligible for reimbursement from the state if we did multiple sites, but we hope that they would agree that that would be appropriate. Next. And then, some questions. We don't know if there are enough spaces on the other school sites to add enough classrooms. We definitely know that in the existing schools, there will be huge pressure on the common spaces, and those would probably need to be enlarged. We don't want to go to three shifts for lunches in the cafeteria. Every school, if we expand on six sites, would be disrupted. And it's not clear if we could do this concurrently, and if we can't do it concurrently, the question is, how do you do it in a serial manner in order to provide enough classrooms in time to meet the need? All of these are questions that we cannot properly answer at this time. And then, as we said before, there's a question about state funding if we chose this option. Next. There's a possibility, because we have it, and it's currently unoccupied, to establish a K through eight at Old Lincoln. It would require total renovation on the order of what's being done at Devotion in order for this to be agreed. And it would have a lower impact on redistricting, although there would need to be some. It continues to be a neighborhood walkable school, and we do believe that we would get MSBA support for a major renovation. Next. And that's kind of a visual projection of what might happen if there were to be renovation at the site of the Old Lincoln School. Next. Then we have obviously concerns, and we've heard from many people who have many more detailed objections, but these are generally, it's on Route 9, it's not a particularly good place for young children, it has serious problems for parking and dropping off, the playground is across Route 9, and if we lose it, we don't have it for swing space for all the other construction that we might contemplate. And clearly, there is community opposition. This is going to show you the impact of redistricting if there were to be a new K through eight at the site of Old Lincoln. Hang on. We need to shift gears here. All right. Mr. Wyszynski, you have the floor.
Okay, so this is what a potential redistricting of the town might look like. This has not been fully scrubbed. This is not a final redistricting plan. If this option were chosen, the exact boundaries would really have to be examined in detail, which we haven't done. This was a thought exercise to see, in general, what would the districts look like. And you'll notice that the Baker School District is fairly intact. Heath is fairly intact. The Lincoln School District, the current New Lincoln School District, is split in half and shifted downward. That's Runcle. That's kind of intact. Driscoll is kind of intact. The impact is in this part of town. The solid line is the current school district, and you can see how it shifts. Excuse my shaking. Route 9 is right here, so it bisects the New -- the Old Lincoln School -- this is the Old Lincoln School District.
Our next possible K through eight would be in the northeast, and part of the reason that we have looked at a location in the northeast is because the enrollment is concentrated in the area of Brookline that sort of starts with the Lincoln and Pierce districts, includes the Lawrence District and the Devotion District. There is no equal pressure for additional enrollment in the area served currently by Heath and Baker, and there's less in the Driscoll neighborhood. So we were able to find a possible site where there is currently an institution, the Mass Association for the Blind, and we thought maybe that would be a possibility, but they have since indicated they're not interested. But that location has appeal, because it has lower impact on redistricting for the rest of the town and preserves a neighborhood school model. And we identified the Amory Playground as a possible location. Okay, this is just a sort of very schematic idea of showing what might happen with the footprint of a K through eight school that would be located in the southwest corner of Amory Playground. Okay, we also understand that the school department does not control the site, and we know from all of the people we've heard from that this would be -- next slide? Sorry. Of great -- it would be a great loss to the neighborhood, and we know it's treasured green space. Please do not believe that we have not thought about this. It's got to be on our list, along with other locations, but we do understand that Amory is a valuable green space and is important to the town. There are other issues that might come up, one of which would be that it's probably protected under -- it is protected under Article 97, which requires legislative approval in order to take it for another purpose. However, the legislature has been open to requests for a school use. And clearly, around this location, there is substantial community opposition. Next.
So here is a -- this is -- we went through the same exercise using the northeast scenario. This is on the website. Actually, all of the maps are on the B-Space website, so you can take a look at them and zoom in and really get a sense of what's going on. So you see here, generally, the schools, with the exception of Pierce, are still kind of -- well, Pierce and Heath are still kind of in the center of their school districts. Well, Lincoln also. But Lincoln currently is not in the center of the school district. So the Lincoln District stays pretty much the same. The Lawrence District is cut in half, and then the Devotion District has kind of shifted southward. Driscoll expands a little over here. Pierce shifts towards the Runcle School. The Runcle School District changes. And then the Heath School expands, moves down towards South Brookline. So this kind of -- it's a redistricting map that's very similar to what we have now.
So the next site would be at the site of the Baldwin School. It has a lot of appeal. It would be the easiest one to build on. We control it. The town and the school department have a portion of -- between the town and the school department, the whole site is controlled. Given that it could be available in a short space of time, it's most likely to be available in time for the enrollment demand. And again, theoretically, it would be eligible for MSBA reimbursement. Next. And that's sort of another sort of abstract footprint of what might happen if we added a school at the Baldwin Site.
Betsy, can I just indicate, just to give you a little perspective, Route 9 is right here. The Star Market in Chestnut Hill is right about there, and this is Hammond Street over here, to give you a little perspective on where this is for those of you who don't know that part of town.
All right, so this is on school property. Conceivably, there's another alternative, if you go to the next slide, that would be on school recreation property, and that's off a bit in the direction of Heath Street from the school. Don't know if that's a possibility. It would also be Article 97 property. So, next. All right. It's not where the enrollment is. It certainly has a major impact on redistricting, which you'll see in a minute, and it would become a commuter school. There'd be very few students who could walk to that school. We understand that along with other community concerns, there is opposition to loss of the neighborhood school model. Next.
Okay, so here is a potential Baldwin School redistricting scenario. This here is the new Baldwin School District, which takes -- kind of combines the Heath and Baker District. And then all the districts need to kind of shift northward. We're pushing from the south to the north. So the Heath School is now at the very edge of its district. The Runcle School is at the very edge of its district, to the point where both with Heath and Runcle, people living across the street would be going to a different school potentially. We have a similar situation with Driscoll. And then Lincoln, New Lincoln School is pretty much intact, and the effects, as you get into North Brookline, lessen. So the southern part of town is primarily absorbing the impact of this redistricting. And notice how big this district is. The school is -- where is it? The school is right there, roughly.
So this is a graph that tries to give you a visual representation of the percentage of students who would have to be relocated by redistricting. The blue line is Baldwin, and you can see that it has the highest number of people who would be relocated if that site were chosen. The Old Lincoln School is the red line. It has a lower impact on redistricting. And if you look at the green line, which is to say, a new school in the northeast area of the town, it has the lowest impact as a result of redistricting. And, next slide? Oh, next slide? And this is just a set of those three redistricting maps together. We'll leave them up for a minute, so that you can -- We'll leave them up for a minute so that you can sort of try to see where the differences would be. But that's the three redistricting scenarios that we just discussed.
Baldwin, Old Lincoln, Northeast.
Okay. Now, the high school. Philip?
The question, question for the high school is, how do we accommodate 2,500 students? The current, I'm going to use round numbers here. The current high school population is about 1,800 students. The capacity of the high school is closer. Closer.
Okay. Oh. The, yeah, exactly. The current capacity of the high school is about 2,100 students, so there's a room for about 300 more. But to reach that capacity, we would have to relocate all the non-Brookline High School programs. BEEP is there, Early Education, Adult Ed, and several others. In FY 2018, the projected high school population is 2,100, which is to say that capacity after we've relocated all the other programs. And in 2022, the projected population is 2,500. Next slide, please. And here's a graph, a bar graph, showing that growth. You can see where we are now, which is the green line, and there's quite a steady increase. These are kids that are already in the school system. I want to emphasize that. They're already here. This isn't projection. This isn't people moving in. This isn't questions we don't know. It could get worse, of course. Next slide, please. And this is based on a study done by the architecture firm HMFH. This is what we need to accommodate all those students. We need 26 general classrooms, five science labs, et cetera. I want to pay a special attention to the need for common space, as in the K through eights. There we go. As in the K through eights, we need to increase the amount of common space, lunch perry in the cafeteria, library, and so on and so forth. In addition, the science labs we have now are, my understanding is that those are converted from classrooms done quite some time ago, and they are, they do not even come close to meeting current science lab standards. Next slide, please. So we've looked at several options. The on-campus expansion option, we have three different options for that, ranging in size. Every one of them, each of the three eliminates either the entire Tappan Street Gym or the Schluntz Gym. Now, according to our consultant's study, the school has more athletic facilities than it needs. I use that term loosely. And we could very well eliminate one of those. However, of course, the other people in the town use those. So we have three options for expanding on campus, and there is the related disruption and so on and so forth, and that results in a 2,500-student high school. The, sorry, leave it there. We'll come back to that. The second option, these are not in any particular order. The section option, second option is to try to utilize Old Lincoln and, and really have an extended campus. So construction would happen there. The construction would not happen at the high school. The big question there is, will that work? It's just far enough away, it's just close enough away to be tempting and far enough away that the distance and travel time may really preclude usage by scheduling. Imagine kids trying to get back and forth. It's not clear that scheduling could be effective and would be a nightmare in any case. The third option we've discussed is on the corner of Cypress and Brinkton Road. So that's one block off of Route nine. There's a one, sort of one and a half-story building that's occupied by Brigham Women's Physicians Organization, and we've discussed that that might be a great site to expand the high school to. Now, it's not for sale, and we don't know if they have any interest in selling that. And the big drawback there is that it's not for sale, and you, you know, there is such a thing as taking things by eminent domain, but that's a very lengthy time period and could be very costly and may wind up in court. That's a big drawback. The nice thing about it is it's closer than Old Lincoln. And the next slide, next slide, please. So just to go back to the high school, this is a perspective view. On the left is the Tappan Street Gym, and Neil, if you could point to the Tappan wing of the classrooms.
The Tappan Wing is on the left, the tall building on the left.
That's the Tappan Gym. That's the Tappan Gym.
The wing is that little, yeah, there you go.
Pointing the wrong place. So there's a little blue bump out.
And then the Schluntz Gym on the right. So under the different scenarios, we are taking one of those or two of those. I won't go into the detail about those scenarios at the moment. All of these solutions end up with a high school of 2,500 students. That is considered to be a very large high school. We've had some conversations about, is it too large? How do you make it feel like a smaller school in terms of the kids and their relationship to the school and so forth? Next slide, please. This is an aerial view. The white-roofed buildings on the left, the U shape facing down to the right, that's the high school. The white building, if you could point to that, just the Unified Arts Building is part of the high school. The red circle to the, down to the right of that is the parking lot, and we discussed whether we could put an addition there. And apparently, MWRA has a gigantic, I don't know if it's sewer or water pipe, running underneath there, making that difficult, if not impossible. That distance is not too far. The next pale red circle, thank you, that's the site of the Cypress Building, which we do not own. And the red circle off to the right is Old Lincoln. You can see that I'm at, you know, that's a fair distance in terms of students going back and forth, and that's, we're considering it because the town owns it, and we're concerned about it because of the distance. The last potential solution that has been discussed is a new high school, whether it's a concept school or satellite school, or how exactly it fits in has yet to be determined. The idea is that that's a school of about 800, which is more than we would need to relieve the pressure on the high school, but it's a number that makes sense for a critical mass for a high school. And that would allow BEEP and Adult Ed and so forth, the other programs, to stay at the high school. Lots of questions. Where is it? What's the concept? What if not enough students want to go there? What if too many students want to go there? And the project cost, of course, is quite high. And that's it for high school.
Phil, can I just, can I just mention one thing about eminent domain, which I, I didn't hear, and that is that in addition to its taking a long time, one ends up paying market price for the property.
Yes.
One doesn't take it.
Thank you. Not only does one not take it, but typically those wind up in court to determine the actual fair market value, or frequently, I should say.
Okay. Well, the natural question is, what does this cost? And how does it get paid for? We need to have about 30 classrooms at the K through eight level by 2017, and 30 classrooms is about equal to a new K through eight school. We need another 26 classrooms, more or less, for the high school, over and above what has been squeezed into the K through eight schools and the high school thus far. There's a lot of data here. You can ask questions on your cards about it now or later, and it occurs to me, as coming into this meeting, that we'll, we should try to put an FAQ up on this particular subject, on the question of, of costs. These are, what I'm going to show you are estimates. They're better than a scientific wild-ass guess, but there's still a fair amount of plus or minus, five or 10 percent. They are estimates, and they're based on what we know now about costs. And we've broken this into operating costs, that is, the costs that we will incur with the new students coming in, the students that we're expecting to see in the school system, and separately, the capital cost, the cost of building a facility to house those students. If we did essentially nothing but had the students stand outside and had the teachers talk to them in the open air, did not build any new facilities, the additional costs of operating the schools, as you get out to 2017, 2018, 2019, grows by $6 million and some change. When you add the additional costs, that $6.8 million. When you add additional costs, overhead costs for all of that, you get up to about $8.2 million by fiscal year 2022. So that's what it would cost if we did nothing whatsoever about physical facilities. What does that look like in terms of people's tax bills? It looks like about a 5% increase. So if you're currently paying $10,000 on taxes, of taxes, you're probably going to pay another $500. If you're paying $5,000, you'll probably pay about another $250. We've put, taken the median single-family tax bill as of this year and for, and median condo and median commercial tax bills. Those are rough estimates, again, estimates of what the tax increase would be, again, if nothing whatsoever was done with regard to capital costs. And obviously, a 5% increase is something that only comes with an override. These are capital costs, and again, they're estimates only, allow for a plus or minus 10% to 15%, probably more plus than minus. And what we've done here is broken out what each of the various options would cost. For K through eight, if we updated Old Lincoln School and went with modulators at the existing schools, we would spend about $14 million. About 12 million of that would actually have to go through an override process. The other 2 million could be funded out of the capital budget that the town already has. If we expanded the existing K through eights, doing the sort of work that's been done at Runkel and Heath for another six schools, we'd spend about $42 million, and if we built a new K through eight, it would be about $56 million. The additions to the high school using the least expensive option, not necessarily the best, but the least expensive option, would cost about $39 million. So you can see the totals for K through eight plus an addition to the high school. I'll show you the tax impact of that in just a moment. If you substitute adding a second high school, instead of adding to Brookline High School, the cost goes from $39 million at the low end to $72 million, probably also at the low end, and the totals are, again, at the bottom, the most expensive combination being $128 million. Go ahead.
I might point out that that does not include site acquisition costs for either.
Yes, thank you. That does not include site acquisition costs for, assumes that we have control over the land, or in one form or another, it can be swapped if it's Article 97 land. This is the impact of that same data, looking at tax bills. Again, this is just the capital cost, and you can see the capital cost will add anywhere from 1.9% for, or 2% to your tax bill, all the way out to 4% if we took the more expensive options. Next slide. And finally, this is the addition of the operating costs and the capital costs, and the least that we can expect to be asking for in order, in an override, in order to fund all of this, is somewhere around 6.7% increase in taxes, or on a typical median single-family house, about $670 a year. Very clearly, the costs rise after that, all the way up to eight or nine percent, close to, well, nine percent in one case. And very clearly, that becomes a very difficult proposition to get the majority of the town to vote for in an override. In fact, 6.7% may be, if there's a great deal of opposition to the, to the site or the choices that we've made. Sorry. I, just go back to that for a sec? Again, these are, these are approximate numbers. They're based on the tax rates as they currently stand. They don't include the fact that costs, generally speaking, within the school system are rising at a slightly faster rate than town tax collections are rising. And all of this needs to be handed to an override advisory committee to figure out what the actual number would need to be. But this will give you the general order of magnitude for the range of options that we are considering.
Okay. And I just would like to make a footnote, so to speak, on the impact. The override study committee will take every, all the data and information that the B-Space Committee has collected and whatever recommendation gets made, and review all of it again before there's any final decision about what will be put before the voters to discuss and to vote on at the time that we're ready to commit to an override. Okay. So here's where we are. We have options. None of them seem to be wildly, clearly perfect. Many of them have serious disruption possibilities and impacts. None of them are cheap. But in our deliberations, as we move on, we're very interested in having some feedback. We'd like you, in your thought process, to consider whether or not the thing you prefer would actually solve the problem of enrollment and provide us classrooms by the deadline that we need them in order for those kids to be housed. The impact on the community, and that has to do with redistricting, and it also has to do with the information you've just heard about family cost, how much everybody would have to contribute to whatever solution we finally have before the voters. And also, impact on local neighborhoods. And I think that takes into account issues like whether or not the school would be a walkable neighborhood school, and also whether or not there would be impacts on available open space, whether it's at the Baldwin School or in the Northeast, where we've had to look at the Amory Playground. So we're asking for some specific answers, or I should say, we're asking you for some specific feedback to answer the questions that we're posing, and we're going to pass out some cards. You don't have to have them ready now. You can give them back to us at a later time. But we would like you to consider those impacts when you provide answers and give us your views on whether or not you would prefer additions to K through eights or one new school. And that will help guide us in our future deliberations. And we have another set of questions for the high school. Would you prefer to have 2,500 students on a single campus? What are your thoughts on a, an expanded campus that includes the Old Lincoln School site? Another option is a new high school at another site. And finally, for the high school, what are your thoughts on double shifts or other kinds of scheduling that might make building use more efficient? We don't have any information about the costs of that set of, that last option, but we're going to pass out some colored cards, and K through eights are yellow?
Yeah. Can I just add one thing?
Sure.
The other thing that the committee is very interested in hearing are, if there are questions, if there is information that you still feel you need in order to be able to have an informed opinion on these things, please tell us what that information is that you don't feel you have and that you feel you need. The second question is, if you think there are questions that it is important for the B-Space Committee to ask before it makes a recommendation, please tell us what that question is or what that information is that we should have, in your view, before we make this recommendation. So what I'm going to do is pass out, so that we can keep track of the specific questions. If you have a question about the high school, put it on a blue index card. If you have a question about the K eights, put it on a yellow index card. If you have a comment on anything, but not a question, you can use any of the other colors that come around. Do not use yellow or blue for comments. Is that clear?
Okay. And while we're passing out the cards, I'd like to suggest that in answering the questions that we're posing, we'd be interested in the high school options, at least to be given a preference rank, whether one, two, three, or four, when you think about them. Now, we, we are hoping that we will be able to take comments from people. Having said that, there are clearly more people in the room than we're going to be able to hear from. We're going to try to organize comments by subject. How about this? If you want to, if you want to ask a question, raise your hand, and if it's a K through eight question, raise your hand. Questions on K through eights, and then we'll do questions on the high school. High school is blue, K through eight is yellow.
Yep.
How we doing downstairs? Are they getting cards also?
I think so.
Phil could take these, these questions.
You're going to need to answer some questions. Yes, is that, do you need help? They have to do. Questions if we don't have. Ability to answer.
Yellow and one, blue and the other, all other colors.
All right, everybody, we're going to try to answer some questions. Could we, could we please have peace and quiet? Hey, folks, settle down. Okay, I'm going to take some easy ones, and then we're going to ask committee members to raise their hands and see who can answer some of the ones that are not the easy ones. One question is, would existing students remain in their current schools if we, I assume, this means if we redistrict? And the answer is, you redistrict once, and everybody moves once. And that means that children who currently attend a school whose, whose address is redistricted would attend a new school, not the one where they are currently. Would the, any of these building projects have an effect on the devotion renovation? The answer is basically no. Devotion is approved to go forward and will continue without significant, shouldn't be any significant change at devotion. There's a question about the Lynch Center Park, which is across from Brookline Ice and Coal on Brookline Avenue. The answer is, we investigated that site, and it has significant issues. They're complicated ones, which Town Council advised us would really preclude the use of it for a school site. So I'm not going to go into detail. I'm just going to say that, yes, we looked at it, and yes, we rejected it. And then there's a question, could we build a new K through eight school in time to provide for the projected enrollment? Anybody want to take a shot at that one? A new K through eight in time for the projected enrollment? George, where are you? New K through eight school in time to accommodate the projected enrollment. What's your take?
The shortest time span for delivering a K through eight school from now would be probably opening it in September of 2017. Four years. Four years, and I'll tell you why it's four years. To go through the NSBA process, pull together a project team, get it designed, get it built, bid, and get it built is four years.
Okay, there's a question, why did the school committee not begin construction following the 2009 initial consultant's report? I think maybe superintendent or staff might want to take a stab at answering that one, but my understanding is that we have created thirty-plus classrooms out of existing school space already.
So, right. I mean, it pretends that this conversation just started, the question. So it leaves out the fact that the Runkel project, the Heath project, and the work that we've done within each building, we're not part of, of trying to sort of stave off this problem and see where the, where some point in the enrollment might be. There were additional classrooms created at Runkel and at Heath, and as was said earlier, there've been classrooms created and continue to be created at each of the elementary schools, even to, even in terms of next year's budget, by continuing to move out early education classrooms to outside buildings.
Before you go away, Superintendent, why is the middle school, or a middle school, not being considered? Current option, let's see, I don't know. I guess the question is, why have we not considered a middle school?
So there have been a number of options of various grade configurations considered. I mean, I will say, what we talked with the committee about in some great detail was that, while you can find research, I think, that supports just about any grade configuration that you're interested in, the, the, the present model that we operate is favored because of the, of the longevity of students in the building. Clearly, keeping students, all students, from having significant numbers of transitions is, is one of the key components historically of this school system, and one we certainly believe in. There are a lot of other major advantages around the K through, through eight system, but, but that's been a, that's been a big basis of this school system for quite some time, and one which I say, I would say that the research certainly favors.
Betsy, I've got some grouped questions over here, if it's helpful to you. So there are a number of questions, and I'm sure I'll find more as I go through all of these. It's a very enthusiastic crowd. There are a number of, there are a number of questions about whether or not we are considering or have considered other sites. So if we're considering green space in North Brookline, why not add all of the other potential green spaces? What about the Perkins School for the Blind? And, and that site, and, and building on the Ivy Street, you know, building on the Ivy Street site?
MAB, not Perkins School. It's Mass Association for the Blind on Ivy Street.
Has the cinema at Cleveland Circle been constituted, been considered as a site? As you can see, there are lots, I mean, we asked, right? So, so people have lots of ideas for sites, and if somebody could just review, Betsy, maybe you want to review the sites that were, that were raised?
Well, the only, the only not, there are only two places that we even considered that are not currently controlled by the town, and those two would be the commercial building on Cypress Street, which is very close to the high school, and had appeal because it would allow us to expand the campus in a reasonable walking distance. The other property that the town doesn't own is Mass Association for Blind on Ivy Street, which is now called MAB, and provides services to individuals with brain damage, and have expressed no interest in having their property swapped. We sort of said, well, could we give you a location somewhere else? And they've indicated that they were not interested. So those are the only two properties that are not controlled or owned by the town that were looked at. The Circle Cinema site is currently, it mostly is in Boston. The part that's in Brookline is not, it's a sliver, it would never hold a school facility that would meet any of our requirements, and is currently being under, I think, about halfway or two-thirds of the way through a development proposal for a hotel and residential other use. What else did we, what else was on that list? Oh, Pine Manor. Pine Manor is being sold off in bits and pieces, and it seems to us, at least, at a price that we could not afford. It would be a location that would be no more desirable than Baldwin School in terms of its physical location, and since we own Baldwin, there's no sense in trying to purchase land in an area that we've already said does not, as a location, fill K through eight neighborhood school requirements.
Let me just add a bit to that. We did have, actually, a number of conversations with Pine Manor, with the idea of moving some of our pre-K classrooms out of our K through eight buildings and into a site there in which there would be a collaboration between our school system, Pine Manor's, who teaches people to, to teach in pre-K, and also Huelac College. But when the leadership changed there and they began to sell off property at a high price, we, we lost our contact, basically. Is that fair, Dr. Lupini?
That's fair.
Thank you.
And I think someone's raised a question about Parsons Field, which is owned by Northeastern, and they've recently spent quite a lot of money improving it, and, again, have no particular interest in having it sold or do a swap with the town, and we wouldn't be able to give them comparable access, I think.
Betsy, can I, can I continue with the grouped questions? So this is actually a question, a series of questions, set of questions that all pertain to the same thing. Basically, people are concerned about why they're not, what's happening with the devotion renovation, and, and why aren't we hearing about it in this mix? And is it, is it, is it happening? And, and that, similarly, questions about, about the possibility of expansion down at Hancock Village, and, I'm sorry, am I not close enough? The possibility of expansion of the population at Hancock Village, and whether or not some of these recommendations need to wait for, for that proposal to be developed. So basically, the, the two, the two questions are, what about the other schools where things are happening? What's, what's going on with those?
Hi, Peter, Deputy Superintendent. The devotion school, we're in the designer selection process. The devotion school, we're in the designer selection process. In fact, we're going to the Mass School Building Authority tomorrow morning to talk about the process of getting approval to move forward with the designer selection, that means choose the architect, which will happen in July, I forget the date. So we expect that to happen. That will mean we'll, we'll get approval from them to move forward. We're expecting that the building's going to be a K eight of approximately eight hundred and thirty students. And so at that point, we'll then have an architect begin to develop schematic and, and get us further in the process. What was the other question? I'm sorry, Rebecca?
Hancock Village.
Oh, Hancock Village.
Hancock Village, Baker.
I think that would lead us probably back to a conversation around the Baldwin location. In other words, if, if it were to, if it were to happen that Hancock Village were to move forward with a significant development that brought in more students to, to South Brookline, that had put enormous pressure on the, the current Baker School that we couldn't accommodate. And I think it's at that point that we'd need to consider the question, or at least we'd turn to the Baldwin site and say, this is an opportunity for us to do something to, to relieve that. So, but I think it's, I, I think it's too early for us to make that decision, although I think that's out there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
There are a number of questions, again, staying on the K eight. There are a number of questions, no surprise, about the Amory Park, about Amory Park. Does the committee, does B-Space know about all of the environmental concerns, about the water table, about the flood plain, all of those things? Have we, have we fully vetted the site? I think is, is the tenor of most of those questions. And the flip side of that is there are also a number of questions saying, why are we not considering? Amory Park seems like a great place, and is there some way to make, to make this palatable? There are questions on both sides, I'm just saying what you all wrote.
Yeah, sure, Mr. Sandman.
My, my dog is sitting at home watching this on BA TV. He's wearing, he's wearing a green T-shirt, because for the first five years of his life, he, he, well, still now, even though we moved, he, Amory Park was his home turf, his home turf. Amory Park, the, the park is essentially built on what was a marsh or a swamp, and certainly anybody who's aware of the effort that's been made to, to keep the fields from getting sodden whenever there's a rainfall is, is aware of that. I think it's sensible to say that when we looked at Amory Park, Amory Park is, was in our minds a placeholder for a place, a placeholder for a site in northeast Brookline. And that means we had to take a place somewhere in northeast Brookline and use it as the base case for developing a redistricting plan. And there, but the general concept was to illustrate what the redistricting would be if we, if we had a place in, a site in northeast Brookline. As it's developed, it's become increasingly difficult to identify any other site in northeast Brookline, but there's no question that Amory Park carries with it, in addition to the green space issues, carries with it some flood plain and water table kinds of concerns, and it may be that it is not a viable site as a consequence of that. So Amory Park is not a done deal by any means whatsoever. It's absolutely a placeholder, an example of what we would do with, with redistricting in that area.
Okay, I've got a couple of Lawrence School questions, and I don't know, maybe Mr. Rowe, you're the one who can answer. If Lawrence adds modules, modulators, if there are modulators added to Lawrence, does that preclude other expansion, or would there be some future possible expansion at Lawrence?
We believe the only viable place to add at Lawrence is that parking lot area. The other side of the building is the Longfellow Playground. Behind it is a set of tennis courts. So the only place that you can really build, I think, is, is on the playground. So I would say, excuse me, the parking lot, I would say that yes, in my view, adding the four modulators there precludes additional development over there. We are, am I correct that we're not going to ask the architect to look at it?
No, actually, I think-
We are, okay.
Yeah.
All six schools except Runkel and devotion are open game for expansion. And that's why we're having their architects look at right now.
So we are, we are having HMFH look at all the schools, including Lawrence, to see if they can inform us and, and come up with, with a better idea. And I, I suppose that would mean we'd have to build up, and I, or whatever, but in any event, I would say it precludes it, but I don't know the answer to that.
All right. Yep, yep. Okay.
But I have a question here, which is how many out-of-town students currently attend the Brookline schools? Please include town employees and Metco numbers. Why don't I start, and then Dr. Lupini will add. Those, the, the two, the two, the town and school employees and Metco students are in, actually, the only out-of-town students that, are the only out-of-town students that we have. And Dr. Lupini, why don't you give us the numbers?
Sure. That's right, they are, they are the two, they're the two groups. There are three hundred, historically have been, since, since Brookline joined Metco, three hundred students who are here from Boston, and the, the staff number is a, is a growing number. It's now in the neighborhood, and it's staff and, it's school staff and town. That number's in the neighborhood of a hundred and forty. That's K through eight, so they're spread across the schools in K through twelve.
Dr. Lupini, maybe I'll just read this, and then you may have some comments here. What research was used to conclude that a eighth, ninth grade school should no longer be an option to solve both the K eight and high school problems, which is why it came up in the first place? Let me just start by saying that there were several issues which came up. One was that the school, apparently where it's been tried elsewhere, from a student point of view, it never belongs to the students because at the eighth level, you're just coming there, and at the ninth level, you're leaving. And as a result, there actually was some data to show that the kids don't treat that school with the same amount of respect from the point of view of physical damage, if you can believe it. Secondly, there were then two transitions that took place, one going to the eighth and one leaving the ninth. And transitions is, for some people, surprisingly, a major issue with regard to part of our, at least part, if not all, of our student population. Dr. Lupini, those are the ones that I remember. Any others?
Sure, and actually, actually, the first issue that you cited has more to do with any grade configuration, not just eighth and ninth grade. And that really is the issue, and there, there are studies on this, there's information available, mainly through the New England League of Middle Schools, on the number of grades in a school. That three grades or more tends to be, tends to be the right number for a school because you have ownership. You don't have a group coming in and a group leaving, you have someone who's actually in the school and, and owns the school. There, there are numerous issues, I mean, we can't, we couldn't find any, any like examples of, of eight nines. It creates problems for us in terms of licensure of our teachers in the elementary grades. Some of you who've, who have kids in the middle grades or who've had them there know that while at elementary school, people are licensed as classroom teachers, at the middle level, they're licensed in particular subject areas. We do that now in seventh and eighth grade, and some in sixth grade, but it really creates a very, very different configuration there. There are some, there are some grouping things that you see happening in a number of high schools around ninth grade, areas where they, where they are clustering ninth graders, much as they are in middle schools in the ninth grade in, in a number of buildings. Hudson High School is a great example. And that's actually an advantage, we thought, when we first looked at this model. I mean, I think we're the ones that put this model on the table because we thought there were some things that could be done in terms of that grouping, and we believe that it solved two problems with one school. But, but there are some of these other disadvantages, not the least of which is adding to the number of transitions, which you mentioned earlier.
Can I, can I add to that, that it's difficult enough to find a site for a six hundred to seven hundred school, student school, to find a site for a twelve to thirteen hundred school, student school, which an eight-nine would be is even more difficult. So on a practical level, it's very difficult to even conceive of a site for a K, for an eight-nine school.
The only thing I was going to say is someone said, and if I don't answer it now, they will later, about a seven through twelve, and, and when we've talked about a second high school, one, one iteration of that conversation was a seven through twelve, it has the same problems finding that kind of space, and at the, and not being interested in getting my Lars Anderson friends interested in coming out to bring some other colored T-shirt. I, I will say that's one of the places that we talked about doing something like that, where you could do some kind of a, a, a middle, middle level program for people who were interested in that, along with a second high school as well. We did talk some about that.
Thanks, Dr. Lupini.
Can I provide you with some more?
Yes, please.
If you will hear. So, now I've just lost my train of thought. There are a, a number of other sites that have been asked about, so we can just read them out. So there are rumors about the Holiday Inn on the corner of, everybody knows where the Holiday Inn is, St. Paul Street, what about, is that a potential site? What about the corner of Aspen Wall Avenue and Brookline Avenue? That would be the, the Lynch Center. And, and there was one other, and I'm not finding it, but Neil, do you want to, do you want to talk about the, the K eight exploration of, or Ken, about-
Why don't I take those?
If members of the committee could introduce themselves, the audience would like, they can't all read our name tags.
Ken Goldstein, Selectman, and Neil, and Rebecca, and I have been the subcommittee looking for the new K eight space. So the Holiday Inn, that is the first I've heard of it. It's, geographically, it's good, it's definitely, as Phil pointed out, with respect to other sites, not something that's for sale. And I want to add to the, to, to that, though, that when you consider taking a privately held property off of the tax rolls, it becomes even more expensive. I mean, you've, you've got to add how much a hotel adds to our, our revenues in the town, both from a, a real estate tax point of view, and the, the rooms tax and meals tax that it generates. So there was some pretty dramatic impacts to that. And Lynch, we've already talked about, but I was actually the one who studied Lynch, so I, there's, there's actually four problems at Lynch, it's worth talking about really quickly. One is it's that the building itself that's there is considered historic, and you're going to have a problem doing anything physically to that existing building. The second is that it's, it's not just Chapter Ninety-seven parks, it's also deed restricted parks. When the town acquired that property, there was some deed restrictions put into the title that prevented from being used for other purposes, not insurmountable, but it, but still a, a lengthy restriction, a lengthy process to overcome that restriction. The third thing is wetlands. So this is a flood plain for the, for the-
Muddy River.
-Muddy River. And, you know, with, with the town and the, the region in general is hard-pressed to find places for floodwaters to go. That's one of the places where floodwaters go right now. Again, it's not insurmountable, but it is a problem, and-
Potential contamination.
Oh, and then the biggest one of all is that it's composed of, of six different parcels. Three of the parcels were one time used for, for industrial purposes. We know from other experience, further upstream on, on the, on the Muddy River and on the, the, the water gradients there, that there is contamination on former industrial sites. It is very likely, maybe not very likely, but once you, once you decide to dig there, you've got to start doing the environmental studies, and once you find that there is contamination there, guess what? You own it, it has to be fixed, and it's a whole can of worms that we probably don't want to get involved in. Not insurmountable, but think about the timeline, think about how long it would take to, to cover each of those hurdles, and I think you, I think you can see why it's been eliminated.
Actually, I'm going to just provide a footnote to acquiring property, and that is, when we looked at the costs of both capital for any kind of school construction, whether it's additions or whether it's new buildings, and you need to then consider acquisition costs added to that, plus the loss of tax revenue of its commercial property, it just simply becomes unaffordable, and therefore, the committee did not feel it was appropriate to consider acquisition of property.
I'm going to add one more little quick note, which is something like the Holiday Inn. In addition to the building, we need some acres of playground and, and athletic field space, and so when you look at that, all of a sudden, that, that site gets, needs to be bigger and bigger and bigger.
Although not eight acres.
Stop and Shop Harvard Street's another site that, that falls into that same category, which I've heard several times.
It's well-located, but too expensive. There are a number of questions here about the demographics, and I think the short answer that I will give, and everybody else can chime in with more detail, is we've got the enrollment today who, by all evidence, the student enrollment in our kindergarten through fifth grade are not leaving us. They come and they stay, and the pattern is very consistent. The enrollment in each of those grade levels is not substantially changed from year to year, and therefore, we must accommodate, we must provide for those students. The pattern, which anybody can dispute, might change over time, but right now, we have a very consistent pattern of increased enrollments, but our task specifically has been to consider what will we do with the students who have already entered our schools. Superintendent, add.
So, yeah, I, I saw one of these questions, and it was really about students who, who are here for a short time, international students, those kinds of things. And, and while it's true that we, that we do have a number of those students in the system, and it's also true that between third and eighth grade across the system, if you're, if you're counting faces, you're, you're actually going to see about sixty percent of the same faces between third and eighth grade. So we have a huge turnover here, not compared to some urban districts, but we have a pretty significant turnover of students. What you won't see is a change in the numbers. So for every student who leaves, one or more come into the system right now.
And if I can add, when you look at the graph, we don't get those kids, you know, the blue line is the births, those aren't the children who enroll in our schools particularly, it's just a statistical coordinate, correlation that has become a predictor.
Right, so we have, and you, you would know this, I'm sure you know our schools, we, we have some schools where that turnover is, is much, much higher than at others, right? And yet, the numbers are still there from year to year. We can pretty much, we have a slide that we've used throughout the system over the last number of years. We can pretty much use our first grade number to predict our graduation classes, okay? Even though the faces change.
Okay, yeah, wait, we have a-
Mike Sandman, I, I'm on the, I'm the advisory committees, the town finance committees, representative on, on the B-Space Committee, along with Neil, who then abandoned the advisory committee for something more interesting. And at the advisory committee level, we had a very, very thorough discussion of demographics when the school department budget came in, and we started to look at this, and we identified a number of factors that have, have affected the school population, the number of kids coming in. One is the expansion of jobs in the Longwood Medical Area, especially jobs for professionals. And those people are very typically attracted to Brookline, and in fact, to northeast Brookline. Guess what? They can walk to work. Brookline continues to be attractive because we have a good school system. The end of rent control caused a gradual turnover of properties to younger people. Younger families moved in, and in many cases, older people moved out, and family size appears to be growing. If you look at the number of live births in Brookline, it's gone up. So there are a lot of different factors that have fed into this, and I personally started off as a skeptic, and spent a lot of time looking at the data, and I must say, the school department is very persuasive when they show us the data. And if any of you wanted to spend time with me looking at demographic data, I'd be very happy to, to convince you that, that chart up there, that's the future, not, not the past.
Okay. So two, two areas of questions, probably for the school department again, sorry, Bill and Peter. So there are a lot of questions that convey nervousness about the old Lincoln School as, as a K eight, and a lot of them suggest that what people are thinking of is simply using it in its current condition, or very close to its current condition, as a new K eight. And could you address what the vision is for, if, if old Lincoln School were used, for renovating it? We, we discussed this in the, in the K eight Subcommittee as well. And so anyway, could you talk about, if old Lincoln School were the new K eight, would it be a new old Lincoln School?
Yes, I, I think, I think any plan that would convert it permanently into a, into a, to a K eight school or any school in Brookline, we would do significant- a, um, to a K eight school or any school in Brookline, we would do significant, um, renovation and probably addition, I think, as you saw in that slide that showed building on both ends. Um, we're currently anticipating that we're going to do work, uh, completely new bathrooms, modification of HVAC systems, some, um, other, uh, surface work, floor work, ceiling work, those kinds of things. Over the next year, we have a $3 million appropriation to do that under the presumption that we're going to be using it temporarily for some purpose. Uh, so we want to make sure that we upgrade it because it's a very significant asset to our needs. Uh, but if I think we made a decision that it would be a permanent new school for whatever purpose, be it modification, be it, be it to address the high school issue or to address K eight, uh, we'd have to put some significant, uh, money in it, as was shown on one of those slides, and we'd permanently upgrade it.
You have more? So, um, the second is, I, is again, a lot of these questions, um, uh, show an understandable nervousness about the impact of redistricting. Number of people asked why or whether, um, current students could be grandfathered into their existing districts. And could you please address, um, the redistricting question?
So, um, I could try. Um, I, I actually have experience doing this in another district, um, where a school was, where a school, new school was built and a school was closed. And there was redistricting into, into those buildings. And, and that was a much different undertaking in that it wasn't driven by an enrollment increase. Um, and we applied a number of principles that allowed families to finish out, grandfathered brothers and sisters, those kinds of things, and, and moved others. I mean, I've looked at some of those pieces here and whether they would be possible, and I, and I'm, I don't believe they would, um, they would be. Um, we, we would, of course, with whatever was set up, with whatever redistricting we might do if another building was, was to be constructed, um, we, we would, we would work like crazy to minimize that because no, no one wants to, no one wants to redistrict if we don't need to. Um, but, but I'm afraid that given, uh, given the growth, and, and that's the main reason for, for this, it would be very, very difficult to grandfather very many people at all.
Um, you might want to just stay there. The, uh, the other question is about, again, sort of many questions about what it takes to renovate all of the K eights. Do they have the capacity to expand the way we need them to? Could we build up at some of them? Are any of them capable of doing that? Um, and, uh, what are the, because it seems like a lot of people would prefer, um, to keep the K eights they have and to, and to let them grow. If that would solve the problem, why is that not just the solution?
Um, so, I, I, I think it's because of the first question, because I'm not sure it's, it's possible. Um, the, we had a lot of conversations when we talked about this idea. Uh, and, and I have some very, I have some very strong feelings about this, this idea, that unless, unless you can create the common spaces, that a simple exercise in just creating classrooms just creates overcrowded schools. Um, some people, some people have said that they're willing to put up with five and six lunches. And I believe that some people who are in those schools now and in certain grades in those schools, I believe that they would be. Um, I believe we have to, we have to look out in this process for the people who come five and 10 years from now. And if we can't provide adequate, um, meeting space in terms of auditoriums, if we can't provide adequate space for, for students to eat, if we can't provide adequate hallways and, and those kinds of things, we can build all the classrooms we, we want, and we won't have solved anything. So, I, I, I'll wait for, for the, uh, for the architects who are doing this particular piece of the study to tell us whether we can create, um, additional spaces, additional of those common spaces. But, um, if we can't, I, I have to say, I'd, I'd be, I'd be opposed to, to that idea.
Can, can, can I chime in with, I read one question a couple of minutes ago that relates to that. I want to, I don't have it in front of me, but the question was, why didn't the school committee see this coming five years ago and do something about it? And why are we in, we in this situation? And as a non-school committee member, I like to defend them. The truth is that, that this was seen coming. We've done the Heath School, we've done the Drisk, the, uh, Runkel School.
Runkel.
And we've done, and we're doing the Devotion School. And, you know, there's a limit to how many major building projects the, the town can, can administer at one time. And this is how it relates to what we were just talking about. The small ball solution of adding on to every school, you know, administratively, it's, it's just a monumental task to, to, to try and have that many building projects going on at one time.
So, it was in 2005 that we began talking about this, right after that first group, first kindergarten came in that was larger than what we'd seen prior. And, and thank you for those comments, Ken. That's exactly what we were asked to do, to play this out, to see what we could do about these issues, short of having to look at another school or whatever it may be. This may be, it may end at some point, you know, all those kinds of, of normal comments. And, and we did. That's what, that's what drove the Runkel Project. That's what drove the Heath Project. That's what drove the reports that, that, Charlie Simmons has done to the school committee each and every year on, on how we've created capacity within each and every building over, over those, over that time. And, and the simple thing was that it was about two or three years ago, we began to say, at some point with these numbers, and you can see that the numbers were increasing, this is going, our ability to do that is going to end, even with going out and now renting spaces for pre-K and those kinds of things, as we've been doing. So, yeah, this has been a conversation with some sort of small ball solutions now since '05.
Um, I want to change the subject, but Superintendent Lupini, you might want to stay by the microphone. Um, one of the questions that was, uh, has been asked is, could we, um, is there a way of changing student teacher ratio or class size that would help us, uh, address this problem?
Um, sure. Uh, yes, the answer, the answer is, and, and that would require, um, the committee, um, the town, the parents, to accept ratios different from, from those that we have now, which are, I think, Peter, in the neighborhood of 22, 21, 22. Um, they're, they are, that's misleading, however. That's, that's a K eight number essentially. That's misleading in that they're, they're larger than that in other student or two at the K through four-ish level. Um, in other words, we're, because, because you see where our size is, our size is at K one, two, three. Our ratios, um, in those, in those, um, in those classes, uh, is larger, our class sizes are larger than they are in, um, five, six, seven, eight, where, where we still have some relatively smaller, um, groups. Um, so, sure, some different decisions can be made about that. I will argue at that point that you're going to increase certain other costs, what you save in, in those teacher ratios. Um, and I want to come back to that, if you could save what you think you can save. Um, you, you would increase your costs in special education and in other fields. It's, there's, there's studies that, that show that. It's, it's pretty well determined. Um, the, the one thing I want to say is people talk sometimes as if that's a simple thing to do. And I've said to the committee any number of times that you, you, you can, uh, when we look for consolidations of classes, which we find from time to time, meaning that we'll go from four sections in a particular grade level to three at that school for the next year because a number of students leave or, or we decide to increase the class sizes. Um, we've found about one of those a year. Um, people, you know, it's often been said to me that you could find more. And it's true that we could, if only I had the ability to move students between schools. So, if we get rid of the attendance areas and create everything as a buffer zone, I can minimize the number of sections. But I wouldn't recommend that because we're talking here about one of the major values being the neighborhood schools. Um, and neighborhood schools are messy in terms of attendance areas. They're messy. It's, it, they don't, people don't, I say to the school committee every year, people don't move where I want them to. If they just would, you know, I could probably save a section or two, but they won't do it. They, they, they keep moving, um, this year, they're all moving to Pierce, and I don't understand why they won't move out to Baker where I seem to have room. Um, but, but they don't. And until I have the ability to sort of move them around, which I don't want, right? I'm not going to be able to control those.
Can I say something else?
Sure.
The point you made about, um, sorry, yeah, the point you made about not having enough room for cafeteria, for common space. Um, if you think about raising class size, while that happens, it's really the worst of both worlds, right? You would, you would try and put all these kids in our current eight schools without the common space we need. And if you raise your class size without creating more classrooms somehow, uh, you'd have both high class size and too many kids we're trying to stuff into the building. So, we've been trying to create the classrooms in the buildings to maintain our class size, which is favorable and we believe that people value. Uh, but we worry if we only, uh, were to, to try and exist with just eight schools, that we'll be trying to stuff just too many kids physically in the building.
Can I just ask, uh, we, we've talked about both class size and sometimes the phrase teacher-student ratio creeps in. And, and, um, I, I wonder if people are aware of the teacher-student ratio and how that's different, uh, than the class size, even in our configuration.
So, um, thanks for that, Alan. So, a teacher-student ratio, while, while I talked about the kindergarten and first grade and even second grade, um, and those class sizes being larger, we've minimized the, uh, teacher-student ratio about four or five years ago, when we, when it was clear that we were not going to be able to keep up with the number of classroom teachers in those grade levels. Um, we had a paraprofessional program, an intern program, um, in the kindergarten already, where every teacher had, had an intern or a paraprofessional. We, uh, we, we moved that program to first grade. And actually, we give principals the option, they can move people, they get a certain number and they can move them to first or second grade. It's, it's, it's a way to minimize, uh, the number of supports needed for students, certain students with special needs. But it's also a way to minimize, um, the teacher-student, uh, the adult-student ratio in those grade levels.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, stay where you are, um, that are related to having a new school, either a, uh, satellite high school, a second high school, or possibly a K through eight that would draw from the whole town, not be a neighborhood district school. Would you like to comment on, uh, second high school and/or a satellite K through eight?
No.
Well, would you do it anyway?
Uh, sure. So, uh, one of the concepts, or one of the ideas early on was this idea of some grade configuration. I won't call it K through eight because it doesn't need to be. But some grade configuration that draws from, across, uh, the schools with some concept or lab school idea. Um, and, uh, it's, it's complicated. Um, it's complicated in terms of hitting upon the right idea. We had some pushback on that idea early on, um, in, in terms of creating an elite school or an elite set of grades. And then, then there was whether you could actually get equal numbers of students out of, not equal numbers, but, but adequate enough numbers out of each of your schools to ensure that you created enough space in your eight remaining schools. Because after all, the concept can be the greatest thing in the world. And if you aren't able to alleviate your space concerns at every one of your schools, you've actually failed at your main, at your main purpose. Create a nice school, but, but you haven't solved your enrollment problem. So, you still have to solve it in some other, in some other way. Um, so that was the ma, that was the major issue, uh, with that, hitting upon whatever the right grade configuration might be, trying to find a concept that would ensure that you could draw students from all over, trying to minimize the concern that was raised that we were going to create something that was very unequal, who would get in, how would you make sure it looked like Brookline, all of those kinds of things. Um, the, so the second high school, you talk about second high school or second high school as sort of a concept. I mean, we, uh, we've pretty much put that forward as a second high school. And whether it's attendance area or not, uh, you know, I, uh, or some kind of concept that, that draws. I mean, I, I've said at a number of these meetings, that I think the main advantage of even having a conversation about a second high school is the ability to do ninth grade podding right, right? To create smaller schools within a school. You can do that when you have new construction. Of the ability to create adequate spaces for vocational programs, I don't know how much you know about this, but we have, we have terrific vocational programs at the high school that are well subscribed and in less than adequate vocational facilities. They're terrible, for the most part. Um, and so, in a new building, you, you get the chance to do that and, and do it right. And, and again, we have a lot of students who are interested in those, in those courses. So, wherever that may be, you, you have, you have some ability to, to do some of those kinds of concepts within the school. I wouldn't necessarily call it a concept school, to, to get some of these issues to address student needs, uh, right.
I'm going to answer a quickie on why don't we build on Cypress Field in front of the high school? The answer is, it's got the MWRAs, very large water pipe and, uh, is not available for construction.
Sewer.
Sewer, sorry, sewer.
And it's, and it's
Oh, and it's historic.
And it's the first park in the United States.
It's historic. Actually, one of the first playgrounds in the country, I think, Cypress Playground? Okay. All right. So, we have reasons that we don't want to build there. Um, Ms. Stone, would you like to pose?
Um, there are, there are so many, the, there are so many questions that have to do with, um, what, what is clearly a desire for, uh, for the whole town to see the presentation of the concept study that was done at the high school. A lot of the questions are about, um, can you build up? Questions like, could we use Cypress Field? Um, the, most of the questions here do not have to do with the size of the school. Um, they have to do with, uh, with whether or not, um, there is a way to either use old Lincoln or, um, build out, um, to, to, I mean, all of these questions are essentially questions about, have you considered, um, various things? People are asking about, um, Dr. Lupini's favorite, uh, favorite subject, which is what happens to parking. Um, and, uh, at, uh, at, um, the high school, once we have 2,500 students, um, if we expand on that site, uh, what ha, what do we do with all of the cars?
So, uh, so I don't, I don't, in the, in the number of times that we've had that presentation done, I was just asking Mr. Rowe, I don't know if we have it sort of recorded that we could put up in some way for people. And maybe that's what we need to do. Because we, we clearly, out of a concept study, can't, can't authorize enough presentations to make sure that everybody gets a chance to see that. They've done that three or four times all, already for various groups. Um, the, I, I'll leave this to, I, I mean, I've suggested to B Space a number of times that I think any concept study at the high school needs to take into account parking and traffic. Um, because my, my simple calculations say that the area around Brookline High School will be a nightmare with 2,500 students. That's a technical term. Um, so I, you know, I, I, I'm concerned about it, but I'm not an, I'm not the expert. So, I think that, I think that that needs to be part of, of the study to, to prove that right or prove it wrong, or figure out how it might, how it might be addressed. Right, the, the presentation earlier was that, um, Latin is a school of 2,400 students on a very small lot, I understand, in a very tightly compacted parking and driving area. So, it can work, but I'm just suggesting that it needs to be part of the study to make sure we can figure out how to address it. Because to ignore it would create a problem.
Um, I, I used to be the chairman of the Transportation Board, and I decided to join the advisory committee and deal with school budgets because I thought it'd be simpler. But, uh, I can tell you that, um, the way parking works for teachers, or tell the, the group that the way parking works for teachers is that there are, um, areas of, uh, of the streets around the, uh, the high school and all of the schools, within the, ideally within a quarter of a mile of the school, that, uh, are set aside for teachers. And when you begin to, um, add, uh, teachers', uh, spaces in that are more than a quarter of a mile away, you begin to bump into other school districts. Uh, and when you begin to add more, um, cars, more stu, more teacher cars to those streets, um, you begin to run into conflict with the people who live there. Uh, so, I, I would not say it would be a nightmare. I think the Transportation, uh, Division could actually do a pretty good job. Uh, but teachers would have to walk a longer distance. Student parking, which is something that the Transportation Board, um, looks at with a very jaundiced eye and something that we have no control over, um, would be very difficult.
Um, okay. To, um, to follow up on the, on the high school questions, um, there, people have picked up on the, on some of the, um, confluence of the sites we're considering for both the high school expansion and the K eight expansion, and have asked, uh, whether or not the B Space Committee is taking that into account. Um, if we recommend Baldwin for a K eight site, how do, how does that, uh, affect what the high school can do? Um, and all, true of all of the other sites as well, particularly old Lincoln School.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Well, clearly, we can't do two things at one site. And, uh, I think the B Space Committee recognizes that. And, um, the Baldwin site appears, uh, for example, to be, uh, substantially less attractive in the event that we need a new K through eight, uh, school because of the implications for, uh, redistricting. And so, my, we haven't discussed this specifically, but it appears to me as though if we were going to use Baldwin, it's more likely to be used for some kind of a high school thing than it would be for a K through eight school. We can't eliminate it yet because we don't know whether we've got another site that we can use.
Okay. Uh, another Okay, another question has to do with whether or not, and I guess this is going to go back to the school administration, whether or not we have consulted with other communities having similar problems or similar student growth? And are we doing what, have we considered best practices? Are other people doing things that we can learn from? Other districts experiencing increased enrollment?
The last time we looked at the data, and this really goes back a year, year and a half ago, the growth in Newton wasn't anywhere near the pattern that we're facing because we looked at Newton and Lexington to try and understand, because we often compare ourselves to similar communities. Newton was talking about growing, but it was really incremental compared to us. Lexington actually had a different curve, if you looked at their enrollments, where they had lower incoming classes at the K through three level, if you will, than their enrollment at the high school. So, there was a different, if you will, demographic pattern in that community that was affecting them. So, Lexington at the time had about the same number of students we had, somewhere in the 6,500 range, but they were shifted in terms of the curve compared to us, where we have larger incoming classes at the low end. And it's that incoming class, if you will, moving like, as if through the belly of a snake, where we have, and it's not like a ball, it's like a telephone pole. We have this large group that continuously is coming in at 600 students a year and it's because we have 2,500 students currently in K through three and we have this significant cohort retention history that, as Bill said earlier, we expect those 2,500 kids to continue to move up. And so, any four-year group that begins with our current third grade and grows before that, but beginning with our third grade through our current K, will be 2,500 students when they reach the high school. And we see, as we look to our future, at least 600, we know for this fall, we have, what, 585 registered today for the fall with, you know, a couple of months to go and we always have some bump up during the summer. So, we're worried, we had hoped to keep it, no more than 600, and it now looks like it will be about 620. Let me say, because it's a really interesting question about what we've learned. So, I think if we've learned anything from those communities that have gone through any piece of this, it is to try at first to tempt your way out of it, right? And I think we've exhausted temping our way out of it by creating classrooms in those buildings, because the conversation in every community is that this will end, right? In every community. And in fact, when we looked at those Lexington numbers, it seems to have, they were a district that looked like us very much in terms of their enrollment, a few years ago then had a kindergarten of 397, right? Instead of the fives and six hundreds that we've been having. So, I think we've tried some of that. And I guess if there's one other lesson for me, it's been that I've experienced with some colleagues who've gone to renovate buildings or whatever, it is value your, sort of your swing space, because it's exception, and I know that's difficult in terms of what we're trying to do here. But a few years ago, I had a phone call from my colleague in Needham looking to rent the Old Lincoln School because they were renovating and looking to, and they were actually considering busing kids this far because they don't have swing space. And that's what, those are the kinds of things you're involved in because you're left with choices of, am I going to look for swing space in some other community, which we've looked at in this process? We've looked at Boston Schools in this process. Or, am I going to do this building project with kids in the building, which automatically adds to the cost of those projects?
Okay, last question, I think.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I'm offering it to you.
You were offering it to me. There are so many good questions. There seems to be, you may have covered this a little bit, Dr. Lupini, before. There are a lot of people asking, suggesting that they like the idea, if there's going to be a second high school, that there is some appeal to the idea of a smaller high school that has a concept and draws. And so, could you talk about two things? One is, is that in fact appealing as an educational model? And is the price tag completely prohibitive? Or, the flip side of that is, what are the educational impacts of the 2,500-person school? What is it that we are losing at BHS if we grow to that size?
Wow, this is the last one, right? So, the first part of it is, I can't answer the cost, I'm sorry, I won't try. Yes, it's expensive. But, yes, I think it brings lots of advantages. You know, I've had people say, if we build a second high school, it wouldn't be Brookline High School. I love Brookline High School too, but I actually think that's a good thing, that we could do some different things there. I mentioned a couple of the pieces there, you could have a specific focus to it, in addition to being able to pod your ninth graders, in addition to be able to build vocational programs, in addition to be able to do the right kind of technology that you might want to do there. Much easier than you could at the present facility. The, I'm sorry, the second piece was about the disadvantages? Well, it's, so I wouldn't necessarily say there are disadvantages, I would say there are things you have to be much more careful with. I mean, it's true in that the concepts we've seen do take away space for recreation, right? For our students and for the community, right? When you start talking about taking a gym and converting that into classrooms, when you start talking about taking another building and taking what are dance studios and turning them into your gym, you've changed program. You've made it much more difficult to offer certain programs. And goodness knows, every time we don't offer enough sections in a particular class, you know, I hear about that, whether it happens to be science or the arts or whatever it may be. So, those are all very important to people. There would be changes in this building just because of what the MSBA reimburses on and what they don't and where we might locate those things, et cetera. The other thing is, we'd have to take, the one thing I would insist upon, and I'm sure if I had the department heads from the high school here and the headmaster, they'd cite lots of other things as well and be right about all of them, by the way. The one thing I would insist upon is that it becomes much more difficult to maintain that adult-student interaction, right? We talk openly a lot about the relationships between adults and students. And that becomes more difficult in a bigger building unless you've taken specific steps to make sure that that's part of your program. So, we would, right? We'd need to, we'd need to talk about what that looks like as an example for ninth graders, because it looks different. And you can't just take 600 ninth graders and pop them in that building and say, great, now they have relationships with X number of teachers. That's something you'd have to pay attention to, to the way you program, et cetera. There would obviously be others. And as I said, if each of our department heads and the headmaster were standing here, they'd tell you what they are. That requires a real, whatever we're going to do here, whether it is this second building or whether it is 2,500 or more students at that location, we're going to have to have some very specific conversations about what that means to program and the way we're going to address it. I'll just finish by saying this, I've had lots of people say to me, I don't want the second high school because I like Brookline High School just the way it is. And I'm here to tell you that that's not the way it's going to be with 2,500 students. It's not going to look like the 16 or the 15 or the 1,700 students that you or your children have graduated from. It's going to be different by the sheer size of it. Doesn't mean we're not going to try to program for it and make it a great high school, it will be. It will be, but it'll be different.
Could you, before you go away, could you just clarify with the last option, number four, a number of people asked for clarification about number four, because, sorry, change in scheduling or building use. What exactly does it mean to suggest a change in scheduling as at least a partial or full solution to this?
Thank you. Well, you know, we asked this question of HMFH, who studied it, because we were talking about, okay, what can we do schedule-wise that would allow us to accommodate additional kids? And basically, what they said to us is, you're going to simply reach a point where you have to either have a double session or not, because the problem is, in the middle of the day, you simply can't accommodate the 2,500 kids in the number of classrooms. So, that while we originally thought that we may have some manipulation if we looked at extending the day on both ends, their message to us was, you're not going to get away with that. You can schedule all your kids, you know, half the school in the morning and half the school in the, you know, later in the day and you have to have two sets of staff, because these overlap issues are simply not programmable. So, the only thing I want to say about that is that I've never seen that as a permanent solution. I mean, other people may know of that as a permanent solution. I worked, when I worked in New Jersey for the Department of Education, I worked with three different high schools that had adopted that as a temporary measure to get them to a building project or to get them through what they knew was a defined bubble. They had a group coming in, the high school was going to become this size, they knew when it was going to end, so they adopted that as a strategy. I've never seen it, nor do I know how it would work, to adopt it as a permanent measure for how to run a high school.
Okay, we sort of run out of time for questions and answers and now we're going to take some comments. I think they will have to be grouped by category in order for us to give a fair hearing. Yep, I will. We've got a slide on the screen that we, as a committee, went through a pretty exhaustive exercise in developing the factors that we would be using to consider and evaluate the various options before us. And the list is, and I'm going to read it for those who can't see the screen, educational excellence, equity and diversity, by which we mean we do not want to substantially change program or composition of student bodies. We would like them to continue to be comparable to what they are, that there be a sufficient capacity in the facility and that includes common spaces for whatever number of students are enrolled there, that we would take into account site location, walkability, and that includes things like safety and definitely issues which would have to do with whether or not there's a major state highway on a boundary of the school. The timeline, we need 62 classrooms, we need 30 for kindergarten through eighth grade and another 32 for high school. We would like to establish consensus, if we can, and have community approval for whatever the final recommendation is. We are interested in hearing about the education model and we certainly would consider a new model that had a lot of support or what is, has been established very strongly in Brookline is great support for K through eight neighborhood schools. And finally, in order for it to be even modestly affordable, we want any recommendation that goes forward to be eligible for funding through the state school building authority, which would provide us with about 40% of the cost of whatever the project is. So, those are the factors that we have agreed should be part of our decision-making process. Any comments from members of the committee before we move to comments from the public?
I'll add that loss of open space should be considered a factor under site location too, not something that we've ignored.
Right. Did we want, did you want to do any kind of review of the comment cards or do you want to move to individual?
It seems like if we're going to have time for people to speak, we better hold those for later. We'll try to compile them.
Yes, and I wanted to encourage the people who were kind enough to be down on the fifth floor, if you're still there, we've had a shrink up here and I know that there are some people down there who wanted to at least be considered to make a public comment. And if you would come up, I think there's room for you now here without the fire department arresting us. And that way, we'd be able to have a fair consideration of all of the people who are kind enough to come out and to be with us here.
Okay, because it is very clear that there is a substantial group of people in this room who have come in support of preserving Amory Park, I have to just be clear that we will not be able to hear from everybody. And therefore, we're going to rely somehow on identifying one or two people who are willing to be spokespeople in order for us to give people at least a hearing on other subjects. So, just as a show of hands, how many people in this room have come to oppose a school on Amory Park? Okay, we can count how many of you there are, keep your hands up.
Turn off downstairs.
All right, in this room, we're thinking at least 25. So, I, you want to stand up and count yourselves out? I'm just saying, it's a substantial number. We're not doing a popularity contest here, it's a question of what is the percentage or portion of people in this room who would like to speak about Amory Park? And the answer is a substantial number, all right? Now, who would like to speak on other topics, for example, on Lincoln School? All right, there are fewer of those. On the question of adding to existing K through eights, are there people who want to speak about that? Are there people who want to speak about high school? Okay, we have a couple of those. Baldwin, anybody want to speak about Baldwin? Oh, maybe there's one, two out there, okay. All right, I would suggest that in order to try to be fair and accommodate at least a perspective on each of these issues, that some among you, and you can go out and caucus outside this room, if you like, on Lincoln and Amory, because those seem to be the two groups with the largest representation. Or, we can randomly select from people who raise their hands, but we're going to have to leave here at 9:30, so somehow, we've got to do this in a way that's fair. We've certainly got your written comments and we will continue to go through those and we will collate them and have them available. Yep.
We can do that until we run out of time.
And cycle back around.
Strategically, if you go outside to caucus, we could then lock you out.
I would suggest possibly a different way. If you want to think about it, all right, we could have Amory people queuing up and we're going to take one from Amory and then one from somebody else. And we'll see how many we can get before the microphone, all right? So, if you want to speak about Amory, we have three people at the microphone, two. All right? All right, so let's hear from one person on Amory. All right, how about people who want to speak about Old Lincoln School or Lincoln as a neighborhood school? Yep. All right, now I'm confused. I think, I'm trying to figure out how many there are. Are you folks over there, Amory, if you're Lincoln, stay to the back for a minute, all right? Just so I can see. All right, Lincoln, go to the back. We'll try to take one from each. How about people who want to speak on other topics, then go over to the right side? And then we'll try to do one from each and be as fair as we can. All right, starting with Amory, first person in line, come forward, identify yourself by name and address and you've got two minutes.
Thank you, my name is Bettina Neufind, my address is 20 Amory Street. I'm in a butter of Amory Park and I'm a town meeting member for Precinct One. I was asked by the residents of Amory Street to give a sort of a summary of the views and our informal conversations over the past week have yielded the unmistakable impression that the concern is universal, that the interests of the residents, not just of Amory Street, but particularly also of apartment and condominium dwellers in the surrounding neighborhood are not being taken into consideration and that Amory Park in particular provides a space that is notably different from the other green spaces in North Brookline in that it is primarily used by, not by families of school-aged children, but primarily by people who are younger, in their twenties, are childless, who are dog owners, who are older and no longer have children in the schools, who do not feel comfortable using the schoolyards in the other surrounding parks such as Lawrence, where I also spend a lot of time. Another concern that has often been raised and I think would Another concern that has often been raised, and I think what prompted the T-shirts, was that the immediate proximity to Hall's Pond and the wildlife sanctuary just seems impossible to reconcile with the foot traffic and the noise and the construction that would be necessitated by creating a new K through eight school at Amory Playground. It's, you know, within 50 to 100 feet, so I will take my leave, thank you.
Excellent.
All right, let's see. Want to keep doing this?
Hey, who's from Lincoln? Please.
Good evening, I'm Shannon Listreerden, I'm a parent, I have three children at the new Lincoln School. I just want to start by saying this was, has been a really helpful presentation, has been really informative, and I really appreciate all of the answers you've given today. I think a lot of us have learned a lot about the process. What I just want to speak briefly about is those of us who live in the Lincoln neighborhood who would be redistricted to the old Lincoln site under that plan have a number of major concerns, which I'm sure you're well aware of many of them. Many of us, in fact, bought our homes in large part because of the new Lincoln School, and this would be really devastating for our families to be redistricted to the old Lincoln School, which I've heard what was said, we completely understand the plan would be to renovate the building, but there's something that just could not be changed about it, and that's that it sits on a major state highway with enormous traffic going right by the school. And we've begun to consult with some experts on this issue, and just the mere fact that it is so near such a major source of pollution is going to have an environmental impact on our children. And I understand that the new Lincoln School is also somewhat near Route Nine, but it's nothing like being right on Route Nine, because what the experts have said that we've started to look at is that it's the first 100 meters that are the most crucial, and there's nothing that could be done about that. Right there, right next to the highway, the pollutants, the particulate pollutants that our children would be breathing, there's just no getting around that.
30 seconds.
Okay, there are studies linking it to asthma rates, it could create potential liability for the town because there are other choices. And just one second, this is sort of a separate comment, an idea, I just spoke very briefly with Dr. Lupini about on his way out of the room, I think deserves a lot of attention by the members of the town, and that is this. Much of the overcrowding, as I understand it, and Dr. Lupini just confirmed this in our 15-second conversation, has to do with a lot of families who are here temporarily from the medical school, the hospitals in Longwood and the Harvard hospitals in particular. And I think there should be some real consideration given by the town to pressuring the hospitals and/or Harvard to either A, create a space for the families that they are bringing and putting the pressure on Brookline, or to funding or helping fund our expansion needs because of the need to accommodate all these families.
Thank you.
I'm Shaun Lynn Jones, and I'm a town meeting member from Precinct One and a member of the advisory committee. I live at 53 Monmouth Street, not too far from Amory Park. I'd first like to extend my sympathy to the committee, because I know you have a difficult job, and it's not your fault that there are no really good options on the table to address this problem. That said, it will be your fault if you choose the wrong option, and you surely will be held accountable, so it's important to get this right. I'm not going to reiterate the comments about-
Shaun, all options are wrong to some people.
I'm not going to reiterate the comments that my colleague Bettina made about the importance of Amory Park to the neighborhood, but I do want to point out, it's not just a neighborhood amenity, it's a town-wide amenity, and it should be viewed as such. Hall's Pond is a unique sanctuary that's used by a lot of people. The playing fields are not used just by the neighbors, and neither are the tennis courts. It's a park that's a rare place where you can do active recreation in North Brookline. By my calculation, it's within walking distance of 25% of the town's population, it's accessible by public transit, and it has off-street parking. So don't just look at this as a neighborhood issue, remember this is a town-wide issue, and there's a town-wide constituency. It would be bad policy, and I think bad politics, to sacrifice this open space for a new school. Now, I'm certainly not going to argue for using old Lincoln School, because I remember what it was like when my daughter spent two years there, and it was not an entirely pleasant experience. I regret that we don't have enough information to really look at the option of expanding the existing K eight schools, and I look forward to receiving the report on what could be done. I'll just say that in a town with as much ingenuity, some of it on this committee even, and administrative capability, I find it hard to believe that we couldn't figure out a way to do these projects sequentially, to use modulators in some cases, to develop the capacity when we need it, and I hope that we'll look at that very carefully when we have the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Shaun. Is there somebody who wishes to speak on a subject other than Amory and Lincoln? Please. Ms. Lockhart, could you just tell us what the subject is that you're going to speak to?
Yes, I'm going to speak about the Lawrence proposed permanent addition using modular materials.
Well, I'm not sure that that is a subject for this committee, because this committee is not involved in planning for that. It's a longer-term, we're involved in a longer-term planning issue, and so I would appreciate it if you didn't speak about that, because it's not something that's been mentioned, and it's not something that's part of our discussion here.
Well, if I may, just to that, my name's Emily Lockhart, and I do believe it is part of this, because it is part of the planning process for all of the schools, as the consultants and experts are supposed to be looking at the expansion of all the schools, and the Lawrence is part of that, that putting modular units in the parking lot would preclude a permanent expansion of another type, which I hope will be looked at for the Lawrence School. And also, it was brought up in the frequently asked questions in April as an idea that's happening, and so I'm here as representative for 17 neighbors who have signed this letter, more who are very interested in this, and there's a strong desire to actually bring this process, this modular process, into the B-Space Committee and overall process for the district-wise, opposed to decoupling it and having it run its own course. So I would like maybe just two minutes just to bear it out.
Why don't we just take that suggestion, which we will take, and we'll discuss it amongst the committee, but right now, it's not part of the discussion that we had, and I want to give other people-
And that's part of the problem, I think that's-
I understand, so we will, we will discuss that amongst the committee.
Maybe Ms. Lockhart could be invited to a meeting to specifically address the entire issue, but I agree with Chairman Morse, I mean, it's not part of what we're, so far is on our table, but I think you should be scheduled at the next B-Space meeting to make your point.
That would be fine.
And how will I do that? How can I do that?
We'll let you know when the next meeting is, which is actually a week from Monday, I think. I'll let you know personally.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. I really do hope that you will take this up and not try to shortcut the conversation.
It's a fair question.
Okay.
Over here, please, someone who is not talking about either Amory or, why don't we take the gentleman here?
Do you need to have the microphone?
Yes, please, you need to, because otherwise the public can't hear. Yeah, we do have a, right.
Good evening, my name is Dave Gashock, and my wife and two children and I just moved into Seven Fairway Road, right across from Heath School, and I'm here because this is the first that I and many neighbors of ours have heard of the potential Baldwin School Plan, and first, I want to thank the committee and express sympathy as well, because you all will be dealing with a very intractable problem with a lot of people with strong opinions, but I want to put a face on what Mr. Waschinsky said in going through the redistricting. My wife and I live right across the street from Heath, literally within the red circle that circles the Heath School on the Baldwin redistricting map. Under the Baldwin Plan, if this ultimately were the redistricting plan, our two children would spend two or three years going a mile and a half into town on Route Nine to Old Lincoln as swing space, followed by the rest of their K through eight experience going a mile in the other direction across Route Nine to the Baldwin site, and we're by no means the only ones. If you look at this redistricting plan, the entirety of the neighborhood on the side of Reservoir Road, which currently goes to the Heath School, gets transferred to Baldwin, the entirety of the neighborhood that currently serves Runkel on the south and somewhat west side of Drew Street now gets transferred to Heath, and it keeps cascading up to the town. I encourage the committee to think creatively, but to ultimately build where the need is and where the kids are, rather than moving the entire town one school down by using the Baldwin site, to say nothing of its impact on the potential site for a new high school addition. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, Amory? Mr. Kimball.
How y'all doing up there?
Okay.
Chairman DeWitt and all the committee, thanks for the great work and the great presentation. My name is Range Kimball, I live at 4 Monmouth Street, and I have a lot of empathy with you. Some of you may know, I was honored to serve as the State Secretary of Economic Development, and I chaired both the Board of Mass Development and Massport, and I've overseen slightly over $4 billion of public sector construction as a board member. So let me talk about two topics really haven't gotten attention. Overall diversity, overall density impact in the Commonwealth and cost controllability. I'd be surprised, some people, that Brookline, at 8,049 residents per square mile, is the seventh most dense city in the Commonwealth, and one of the 30 or 40 densest cities in the United States. North Brookline, at approximately 12,000 people per square mile, is rivaled only by Everett, Somerville, and two other cities in New Jersey. Taking away Amory makes North Brookline essentially like Eastern New Jersey. Just in terms of, we have 1/5 the green space of Worcester that has half our population density, and 1/5 the green space of Springfield that also has half our population density. So to solve a problem by taking away green space in one of the densest town areas in the United States really is a problem. Second, let me just talk about cost controllability, and I know that Chairman DeWitt, you talked a lot about that. I've had a lot of experience with major public worst construction. When you go below ground, the level of uncertainty increases enormously. No contractor or engineer can guarantee what the costs will be, especially when you go into a hydrogonomically complicated water table like Amory. My crude estimate, based on a project I did in Longwood, is you're adding 20 to 40 million dollars of uncertainty by going below grade in a water table zone. Just to look at Newton, in Brookline right now, we spend $226 of capex, capital expense per capita. Newton was at our level five years ago, till Newton North, that infamously expensive high school. Newton now spends $970 of capital expenditures per person. While it may seem like small ball to expand existing schools, the costs once designed are known. While it may seem expensive to buy a piece of property like the Holiday Inn, the day you close, you know to the penny your costs, and they'll never go up. So I would, so my time is up, but I would just hate us to put too much weight on short-term construction management and planning complexity for the sake of a decade-long budget problem and a forever creation of an incredibly dense area where we have the opportunity to keep green space. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Joe Bisup, I live at 25 Glen Road in the Lincoln District, I have two daughters who attend the new Lincoln School. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a city planner, I'm not an engineer, I'm a humanities professor, so I tend to think about things in terms of principles and values, and one of the values I would like to think about is the value of doing unto others. So as a parent in Brookline, I'm proud of the fact that every parent in our city can be proud that their child and happy that their child goes to the school that they do, and I don't think that will be the case if we renovate and put old Lincoln and put children on a school that opens up and walks down onto a major highway. I just don't see the building being able to allow that kind of feeling about the school. Second, I want to think about competing values. One of the values that's central to our town is the value of educational excellence, right? It's fundamental to our identity, it's why a lot of us moved here, and it's fundamental to our economy. It's one of the pillars on which Brookline's vibrant economy and robust economy is based. Anything that we do, any solution that we do, I really want to encourage the committee, any solution that we choose should be progressive and innovative and speak to that value of educational excellence. We should not adopt an expedient solution that creates a school that is likely to be one of the less successful and less physically accommodating spaces, simply because of cost. I think that's a short-term thinking, not long-term thinking. Personally, and I know that the value of neighborhood schools is something, and walkable schools, is something that we all have valued as a town, I personally would be willing to sacrifice that value for the value of educational excellence and for the value of maintaining the districts that have a strong history in our school. And I would endorse the plan that Mr. Lupini said was no longer on the table, which was to have a school that drew from throughout the town that offered something that residents might opt into. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, someone neither Lincoln nor Amory, please.
Alan, can I just say a comment?
Sure.
As is pretty evident this evening, this committee is really struggling with this problem, and as you've seen, the options before us, none of which are very attractive to any of us, and we're hearing enormous concern and antipathy toward the Amory solution, and the old Lincoln solution, and even the Baldwin solution. It would be extremely helpful to this committee if people not only express their negative thoughts about some of the options, but also some positive thoughts about maybe some options we haven't heard about or thought about. So if that's in the room, we'd love to hear it, thank you.
Bravo, George, thank you.
Hi, my name is Benjamin Doughty, I live at 57 Perry Street, and I am a recent graduate of Brooklyn High School. By no means am I a statistician, and I have not looked at the population data, and I'm not endorsing or opposing any specific plan here, I just want to point out that I think this rise in population growth, which has triggered this problem, was basically unforeseen until it hit, and I'm wondering, A, whether the trends that are currently going on are predicted to continue in their current form, and how do each of the plans that are on the table cope with, you know, potential future increases? I would say that expanding the K through eight schools, basically to capacity, would not be able to respond effectively to another growth, and then you'd have to, you know, some number of years down the line, build a new K through eight school when you could sort of solve that problem now. So I would like to put my support behind a new, excuse me, a new K through eight school that I think would be able to deal effectively with, you know, any future population growth, because I think it would be really, really problematic to do this exact same discussion in 15 years when it could have been avoided right now. I know that as a child who lives in the Lawrence District, the Lawrence School was expanded, and people had been talking about building more classrooms on, and then they didn't think there's going to be the need, and now there is a need, and it would be bad to go through, you know, two renovations within a span of 10 years, and so I just think we should think not only about the immediate future, but about the future in the long term, and just not go through this again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think I handed that gentleman his diploma not too long ago.
I'd like to try and answer the question, it's a good question about demographics, and as I said, I came into this process, actually started it before this committee was even formed, looking at school demographic data and wondering whether it was correct, wondering if it was correct, not so much from the perspective of whether we would need to build another school in 15 years, but rather whether we might build a school in the final 10 years we didn't need it, which is also possible. I guess the best thing that we can say is that we looked at the various factors that have influenced the rise in population, we don't see them changing, that is, we don't see, for example, employment in the Longwood Medical Area going down, we don't see rent control coming back, we don't see family sizes changing in the opposite direction for the foreseeable future, and how long the foreseeable future is, is up to you to figure out. But we all have a very long-term view of this, I assure you, none of us are looking for an expedient solution, and when it comes to the demographics, we are hoping that our demographic projections are right, but quite honestly, we are only, we can only base that on the information that we have, and we have to make our judgments based on what we know now, as opposed to what we might know 10 or 15 years from now.
Thank you. I call Sarah because I know that I would be killed if I didn't at least let her speak.
Ah, no dead bodies, I promise. I'm Sarah Churchill Silverman. I'm Sarah Churchill-Silbermann. I am a parent in Lincoln School. My husband Sam and I wrote this letter, and I think we have a few other ideas. We are against the idea of turning the Old Lincoln School into a permanent K-8 and splitting the current Lincoln School District into two. The current Lincoln School District is one of Brookline's most diverse, with the largest percentage of students in the district, 19% receiving free lunch. 14% of the students at the school are English language learners, and 46% of the students have been identified as high-needs. It's truly a diverse community. The proposed Old Lincoln School District will not be the same. Most of the English language learners will be in the Old Lincoln District, and the Old Lincoln District will lose its economic diversity. It moves the Pill Hill District into its own school and excludes the rest of the community. It will be hard to create two equal versions of the same community, and it's impossible to imagine creating a campus or building as nice as the new Lincoln School. To solve Brookline's space problems, some students should not have to move to a less equitable setting. We are in favor of the Baldwin, the Amory, a different redistricting map with less students crossing Route 9. We do believe Lincoln School could be a successful 8th and 9th grade school. It's a short stay there, and there are course sequences necessary for high school graduation that can start in 8th grade. So, 8th and 9th graders together would give some students the opportunity to start their course sequence for graduation earlier. Something very bold would be to switch the K-8
15 seconds.
... school assignment system to a town-wide lottery-based process. Existing families stay in their schools, new students enroll via a lottery. And finally, if you have to use Old Lincoln as an elementary school, keep Lincoln and make it a two-campus school, and come up with a way for kids to be there for only two years, but be part of the Lincoln community that people love and works. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I would just say to you that the people who studied the redistricting would disagree with you about the diversity issue that you outlined.
Okay. It's on the Department's website.
Where are we here? We've got someone who's going to talk about something other than Lincoln or Amory? Thank you. We'll go back here.
So, my name is Sarah Mogtatter. I have children who will all eventually go to the Lawrence School, I hope. One of them is already there. And I teach at the Devotion School, which is obviously an oversubscribed school. I don't know if I'm addressing the committee or if I'm addressing everybody, because I really want to say that I want to speak in favor of building a new school. And I think part of that is from what I've seen at Devotion. I think that I've seen a school in action that is overtaxed. And I hear the committee saying, I hope that all of us in the room realize, that we realize that there's concerns about common space if we keep on adding classrooms onto our schools. But there's other concerns, too. The small schools have really served us well. And when we get to these large numbers, we have to also think about our staffs, our principals, our vice principals, school psychologists, guidance counselors with large numbers of students, as well as special education teachers. So, I kind of felt like I might be saying that to a committee that's already realized that, but I wanted to make sure that everybody in the room heard that as well.
Thank you. Amory?
Hi, my name's Jonathan Unglaub. I live at 135 Freeman Street.
Please speak into the microphone.
Yep, okay. First of all, I think the word "Amory Playground" is a bit of a misnomer and diminishes what Amory Park is. It's an Olmsted-worthy scenic vista. It's an oasis. It's essential to the Cottage Farm Historic District and that designation. I also want to suggest a couple of perhaps out-of-the-box ideas for new spaces. I'm wondering if there may be a possibility, I have no inside knowledge of this, of collaborating with the largest landholder in Brookline, who knows how to build buildings very quickly and efficiently, and that's BU. And I'm thinking in particular of the enormous parking lot on Dummer Street, which of course would have to be renamed, behind the Metropolitan College, which is completely undeveloped. And perhaps some kind of mutually beneficial relationship could be arranged where BU gets some kind of pilot or payment in lieu of taxes relief, and perhaps the town leases rather than buys property from a development that would also serve BU's needs. I mean, of course, it would have to be a fairly large development if it could accommodate both an elementary school and BU property, but along Commonwealth, between Commonwealth and Dummer, I think it's perfectly appropriate to build a large building. The huge Metropolitan former Cadillac building is already there. It's just a suggestion of something that could, you know, it's outside the box, the town doesn't own the property, but BU likes having good town-gown relationships, and perhaps the development could suit their needs as well. Another possibility, our city
You're almost out of time.
Stop that, okay.
Go ahead, finish the last one. First one was good, keep going.
Center Street is, the Center Street City Parking Lot is an underused space. I mean, for parking, of course, that would have to be preserved and located underground, but if school could be built on top of it, a green roof for the playground, there's already an auditorium going to be built on that site by the Coolidge Corner Theater Expansion. Perhaps there could be some way for the theater to be designed to meet the needs both of the Coolidge Corner Cinema and the school. Of course, the cinema wouldn't need the theater during the day. I mean, again, this is out-of-the-box thinking, but I think we may need to look beyond simply property the town owns and controls, because obviously all of the solutions there are undesirable to one degree or another.
Thank you very much.
Can I jump in there for a second? So, your first idea, BU, is something that, I'll confess, we have not talked about. I read it on a few different cards here tonight, and, you know, George said before, we're looking for new, out-of-the-box and out-of-the-town, by the way, solutions.
Well, I think that's properties actually in Brookline.
Yeah, we'll find that out. But Neil and Rebecca and I will certainly look into BU. I think it's a great idea. Thank you for everybody who suggested that. The Center Street Lot idea, if you want to see a meeting with an adversarial tone to it.
But improving the parking situation by adding multiple underground levels.
That is a very interesting idea, that cost per space is somewhere north of $25,000 per space underground. So, interesting problem. That would be a real tough one. But the first idea is very interesting. Thank you.
So, I'm going to talk about all of the options. You asked us to, which option do we prefer out of expanding
Amy, can you identify yourself, please?
Oh, Amy Luster, and I live on Newell Road. My kids go to Lawrence and the high school. And we've had phenomenal experiences at both places, and the teachers really make both places phenomenal. You asked us which options we prefer, and I can't say I like the idea of splitting the Lincoln Campus. I think that should still be on the table. I think a lot of options should still be on the table. I'm leaning towards expanding the K-8 schools. I do feel like there's a nice diverse community in each one of them, and the Baldwin ones seems like you're jury-rigging kind of a suburb, and that would be my preference. Along those lines, I think each one of those K-8 additions have to be thoughtful. And here are two points that were made, one by your committee, that there has to be sufficient facility capacity is one key component. And Bill Lupini said just adding classrooms does not solve that problem. So, I'm going to use one word you asked not to be used, but the modulators at Lawrence violate both those things. And I just want to make sure a thoughtful addition at Lawrence, which could solve not doing Amory and not doing Baldwin, is a viable solution. My other two creative new things to put on your plate is, just because our contact at Pine Manor has gone, I think Pine Manor could solve another solution. If we got field space, I mean, we're always complaining about soccer space. Couldn't there be some fun multi-year, you know, somebody either donate, or, you know, I know there's a financial side to it, but it could be green space that we acquire to exchange for building at Lawrence or any other location. So, that's one creative idea or option to throw on the table. And also, if we do expand all the eight schools, then there's a potential for the Old Lincoln School to be converted into some sort of park space. So, maybe it's not an immediate exchange with the state, because I know that's the issue at Lawrence, but just adding modulators at Lawrence, you're using the same already small cafeteria, and all the common space is going to be continued to squished. I think it's the wrong solution, and spending not-good taxpayer dollars, whether it's state or local, on a solution we thought was a September timeline, and it's not. So, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. You've been waiting a long time. Thank you. You've been very patient.
My name is Jane Gilman, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, and co-chair of the Town Meeting Green Caucus. I first want to thank everyone in front of me for an incredible job. All the things we saw there is the result of hours and hours and hours, and you make it look easy, and it isn't. I'm concerned about the choices that were laid out for us, where you talked about the impact on the schools, on the community, on the local neighborhood. There's an elephant in the room. We're talking here about what Brookline needs to do to meet population pressures. We have too many people to do things as we've always done them. The elephant in the room is we also are hurting the environment. So, I wanted to inject into your dialogue how to do what we're going to do in the way that mitigates global warming and does not contribute to our carbon footprint in Brookline. And I think if we don't take this into account when we're deliberating, we're sending a very strong message to the kids. This is an educational moment, a quintessential educational moment. So, I wanted to raise a couple of things. What do we do after the bubble? Is there any way to build a building that could have potential reuse afterwards? Maybe Section 8 housing, maybe elder housing. Maybe the paradigm that we are thinking in is outmoded. Maybe clinging to the idea of walking to a neighborhood school gets trumped when you consider the quality of air, global warming, water sources, and the like. So, that's a priority question. But I did want to comment on the fellow who lives on Monmouth Street, who talked about what happened in New Jersey. If New York City had solved its population problems by capturing green space, there would be no Central Park.
15 seconds.
Thank you. I also wanted to talk about building up at the schools instead of increasing the footprint. I know that, because I've seen it done all over the city, and I spoke to the architect about that, you can build around a facade, an existing building, and preserve it, and then build up behind it. So, I hope you'll consider multi-story, and I hope you will consider thinking in new ways in the new environment. Thank you.
Thank you. What's your subject, please?
High school.
First of all, I too want to commend the committee for a fabulous presentation and clearly hours of fantastic work.
Thank you. We need to know who you are.
Oh.
We'll send you a thank you note.
So, you can thank me properly.
Send you a fruit basket.
My name is Tal Kennett, and we are about to move to 17 Lowell Road behind the high school. And I can, so first of all, just to comment on your first question, read the K-8. I absolutely support a walkable school. I actually support a new school. I think the BU idea is fabulous. I think the walkability is key, and I'm not that scared of redistricting, but that's because I have kids that are too little yet, probably. Read the high school. You had a, almost doubled the bill from expanding the current high school to adding a new school. I think the question was ill-posed. I think that there would be a lot more appetite, at least on our end, on my family's end, to pay double the bill for a concept high school, for a magnet high school, for something that would offer something substantially different, be it science and engineering, you know, following the Bronx Science and Engineering School, Polytechnic, various other magnet schools that are out there, public schools that have done very well. If we're not going to do something that's special in the second site, that's different, I personally don't see why we would have appetite to pay double the bill for that. I would be in favor of expanding the current school in some creative ways.
Thank you very much. I think our superintendent agrees with you.
Makes sense. Can I make a comment?
Please.
Thanks. That's a great segue for me to add something that, I was talking with Bob Sperber, the former superintendent, earlier, and he said, you know, you shouldn't just talk about the costs, you should talk about the impact that good schools have on Brookline, on property values, and on the culture of the town. So, you've just raised a very interesting issue about selling the concept of spending more money in order to do something more interesting. The hard part is to sell that concept. I don't think that you'd find
Right.
Exactly. I don't think you'd find a lot of disagreement on the committee. We're not fixed on the idea of having the least expensive solution. On the contrary, I think that, personally, I know, I would vote for the most expensive if I was convinced that it would do the kinds of things that you're talking about. So, this is an opportunity to just say, we're not only focused on dollars and cents, we appreciate the much broader values that a concept school or something innovative would create.
If that doesn't bring a huge rise in property values to Brookline, I don't know what will.
Well, it seems to be happening anyway, but yes.
Subject, please.
General subject.
General, oh. Good strategy.
Overlapping.
General subject, isn't that about, like, general modes? Yeah.
My name is Tom Nally. I am a parent of a Brookline High School freshman, at least for the next few days. He is also a former Lincoln School student. And I will pass on some written comments. I think I'll be redundant if I say some of the things I was going to say. However, I do want to focus on a couple of things that I've learned from my son. One thing that I've learned is that it's very important to maintain the recreational facilities at something like the Tappan Gym. My son has spent countless hours over the years in the Tappan Gym, and the pool, for that matter. And I think it's very important that that be preserved, and that location is an excellent location in the town. So, if you're doing something in combination with expanding the high school, I would say, figure out a way to preserve the uses of the Tappan Gym at or near that site. I think also that in terms of recreation, my son has also spent countless hours on the Amory 90-foot diamond. There are two 90-foot diamonds that Brookline owns at Warren and at Amory, and we need to preserve those or replace them, but we'd love to preserve them because we love playing ball at Amory. And finally, I'm just going to make the point that we need to take a comprehensive view, not only focused on recreation or on education, but also on how this relates to economic development in the town. Clearly, if we're looking at sites that could reduce the amount of development opportunities that we have in the town, I think we're taking away from potential revenue that we will need to support operating and capital costs. So, any sites, and I guess I would make an exception with the Cypress Street site, because I would, if the Cypress Street site becomes viable, I think it will be important to relocate the current tenants to other space, commercial space in the town, so that continue to pay rent and continue to be members of the Brookline community. Thanks very much.
Next, subject, please. Baldwin School. Wonderful.
Hi, my name is Leah Cuniberti, and I live at 1824 Beacon Street, and my family and I live in the Runkle School District. And I think right now I'm in support of a new K-8 school. However, I do not like the Baldwin site. It would double the commute time for my family or the commuting distance. And one of the main reasons my husband and I chose to move to Brookline a few years ago is for the neighborhood schools. a few years ago is for the neighborhood schools. I love being able to walk my child to school. I love that we don't have to drive over. I think the Baldwin site, for many families, would bring up issues of safety because it would, you know, I would personally let my child walk now to school in a few years, but probably not if the commute were a mile away. I think it would increase dependence on cars for those families that did have a car. Many of my neighbors don't have a car. So for those reasons, I'm just, I'm not in favor of the Baldwin school site. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thanks very much. Ms. Silbuck, I assume you want to talk about Amory?
I don't.
Oh, good. I'm glad I posed my question that way.
I may get one line in there about Amory. Kate Silbuck, town meeting member, Precinct 1, resident of Amory Street, Lawrence, and high school parent. I just wanna have a bunch of little points. One is, somebody who's not here has been really pressing the idea that we should be investigating public-private partnerships more closely and somehow unifying buildings. And I don't fully understand that, but I would love to hear whether or not there's been any discussion of it. The second thing is, at the very beginning of this process, I felt like there were a lot of jokes about Town Hall, and I, you know, I personally dismissed them. But as this process has gone on, I've thought, it's just so clear that the OLS is not a great site for children, but that doesn't mean it isn't a good site for adults. And I just feel like that's something we kind of really need to dig into. There's a huge capital waste, obviously, to all the work that was done here if we were to do that. It's not like I don't understand that, but I just feel like we ought to maybe, after we've seen that every option stinks, that this is another one that stinks. But maybe we should be thinking, maybe we should, now that we know how bad all the other options are, circle back and say, "Well, maybe it is Town Hall, or maybe it is one of the libraries, or maybe it is the Health Building." I don't really dump on the libraries, but it's something else that we own that's a building already, and maybe we swap the adults over to the old Lincoln School and have the children be somewhere else. And I, you know, again, I know it's not a perfect option, but it's something. Okay, about Amory, the only thing I wanted to add to what's been said is that, you know, it takes past generations, it's taken many past generations to keep that green space green, and we're one of the current generations, and I hope that future generations will as well. That's how green space stays green. And I want to align myself completely with Amy Luster's point, which is, I'm not against modulators at Lawrence. I was enthusiastic about them when we started talking about them. But the more I've listened to this process, the more I've thought, it does not make sense to use up the only footprint, as Peter Rose said tonight, at the Lawrence School, on four classrooms. If actually we're gonna end up building six classrooms there in some common space, it's just, these processes do need to get together somehow. And then the last thing is, I feel like this was informative, but it was an information session where you guys spoke to us most of the time, and there hasn't been much time for public comment. And I'd really encourage you to schedule an actual public comment hearing where the public talks to you. Because I think a lot of things that are given in narrative form are actually really much more useful than, you know, sort of single comments on cards. Thank you.
Thank you. Subject, please.
Other sites?
Thank you.
So, I'm not the best public speaker, so I tried to write down what I wanted to say. My name is Alan Christ. I'm a Lawrence parent, as well as an architect, with experience in urban infill and urban design. Been following the B-Space process for several months, and I have a suggestion that I would like to make regarding potential sites. Currently, the town's demographics and population growth point to the need for additional school capacity somewhere in the northeast quadrant, which roughly includes the area served by Pierce, Lawrence, and Devotion. Many residents have expressed a strong preference for new classroom space in a location that would maximize walkability throughout the district while minimizing the impact upon existing open spaces, which is a complex issue. Schools require open space to function adequately, but the amount of open space in the town could potentially be reduced by either the large footprint of the additions to existing schools or by the construction of a new school in existing park space. Given the fact that both of these potential options could reduce open space, the town needs to come up with a different approach that could add park space to the town while keeping new classroom space in a walkable location. In light of this, I'd like to propose a possible option for locating a K-8 school in the area to the east of Nyvet Square. Currently, BU owns a large lot at 50 Worthington that faces Amory Street and is largely vacant at its rear, across from Nyvet Square. What if the town tried to acquire the rear of the 50 Worthington lot from BU via some sort of lot-split agreement that would preserve the house, which occupies a very small part of the site? The town could then potentially enter into a partnership with BU's education school, if necessary, to help facilitate the land transfer. That way, all interested parties could benefit from the proposed new development. The 50 Worthington site would be walkable. It would simplify redistricting, and playground space for the school could be located on-site, which would add public open space to the town, a benefit that many of the other proposed options cannot claim. And it can do this while protecting the open space that we all cherish at Halls Pond, Amory Park, and Nyvet Square. In light of this, I urge the B-Space Committee to seriously investigate the 50 Worthington site for a new K-8 school.
Thank you very much. Alan, offhand, do you know how large that space is?
It's larger than the MAB site. And it runs from about, here, wait, I have the board here. Sorry. It runs from the corner of Worthington and Amory all the way to the MAB parking lot. It's an area, it's not a wetland.
Right, I'm familiar with the space, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so it's a big site.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Hi, my name is Devon Powell. I live on Mason Terrace, and I currently have a kindergartner at Driscoll School, and my younger child will hopefully be attending BEEP in the next year or two, depending on wherever BEEP may be. I am your problem. I started living in Brookline in 2000, and my husband and I decided to buy our house in 2007, when we started having our children, for the school. So I'm the reason that you guys are here today, and I'm here to represent a lot of my friends that couldn't make it because they have young children. I know that where I live, I am actually not impacted by any of this redistricting currently. We would continue to stay at Driscoll. But I wanted to speak as someone who is, I don't have a solution for you, I wish I did, but wanted to speak for the neighborhood school model. We moved to Brookline not only because the schools, we knew whatever school we were at was gonna be excellent for our children, and we loved it, but also because of the sense of community in Brookline, which is really enhanced by the neighborhood schools. And you can see the community is just here in this room, all of the Amory Park people, all the Lincoln people, even those that don't have children and aren't a part of the schools. The neighborhoods are what make Brookline. I'm also one of the many residents in Brookline that does not have a car. And redistricting, for a lot of people, really affects how their children get to school and how they are able to get to school. Can they be a room parent? Can they go to plays? Can they do all of these things that you need to do as a parent in a school? I love my walk to school with my son every day, and you see all of the different kids coming out on Mason Terrace, and we're all walking to school together, and we know who all of them are, and we are a wonderful, large community. And I just hope that whatever decision that is made, the neighborhood aspect for the schools and for Brookline as a whole is really kept as part of the decision-making process, because I think it is as important for our educational model as the teachers, as the class size, as all of the other things that we take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we have, someone else would like to speak?
General comment?
Very good, thank you.
I guess this falls into the out-of-the-box category, but I would much rather see... I'm sorry, I'm Bob Schramm from 47 Monmouth Street. I would much rather see our town offices, our school offices, in modular or temporary accommodations or in South Brookline than our children. And why isn't this building and the public health building across the parking lot in play? Because they could certainly be part of the solution for the Pierce and North Brookline problem. And the general comment is simply that nothing is more important in Brookline to our sense of community than our schools and our green space. And any, any, any solution that pits green against schools or neighborhood against neighborhood in the siding of the schools has to be avoided. I fear we may be moving in that direction. So I, you know, God bless you, you have a lot of work to do, and we wish you well.
Thank you very much. And I will assume that that closes this hearing. Chairman Dewitt, thank you very much, all of you, for your patience.
Mr. Morse, do you want to talk about the process? What comes next in terms of decision-making?
Say again? Oh, I'm sorry, right, before you go. Ms. Stone asked me, and I agree with her, to talk a little bit further about process than I did in my introduction. And in my introduction, I told you about the process up and through the decision that the school committee, I hope, will be addressing in the early fall. But there are a series of additional processes that are likely to take place. We have an override study committee that will study the costs and the options for revenue that is just being formed now. People have been asked to apply for that, for membership on that committee, and we actually have both of the co-chairmans in the room at the present time, Selakman Benka and my colleague Susan Ditko, back there. So that's going to be a good and solid process to make sure that not only, whatever decisions we're making are good decisions, but also to make sure that the expenditures that we're making today are in line with expenditures of other school systems that are comparable. The override study committee, once they have made their report, presumably then will be superseded by a campaign for an override. And I did mention that at the end of my remarks, by making a plea to everyone that once we have a plan, hopefully, that the community must get together and support that plan, or we will have no plan to execute at all. So those were the additional processes that I wanted to lay out for you. Thank you.
So, are there any other comments from members of the committee before we close the meeting? No? Okay.
Actually, yes. We got, we got some...
Come on, Mike.
There are one, two, three, four, five. I think I've written out five very interesting suggestions here. The purpose of these meetings is to educate the public, to hear some questions and answer some questions ourselves. But I think, I said to somebody else one time, I've been to about 300 meetings in Brookline, sitting at the front of the room, and a lot of them sitting at the back. And in every single one, good ideas come out, and this is certainly no exception. So thank you very much.
And I'm just gonna add my sense that we will continue to listen. I know that it's been tough for some people who really feel that they haven't had an opportunity to speak. I think our committee members are listening independently, regardless of what happens in our working meetings, so I want you to understand that. I'm hesitant to say, "Continue to send us emails," but I think you probably should. We'll do our best to try to read them all and to incorporate their comments and your thoughts into our deliberations. Understand that, in the end, this is something that this entire community will be fully engaged in. We all will have to be agreeable in some way about what the solutions are. Otherwise, it's not gonna happen. So our goal is to come up with the best, and I would say maybe the least worst, of the various options that are before us. And we have to do it by a deadline. So you'll be seeing and hearing more, and we will be listening to you. Thank you all.